Good morning, everyone, and welcome up to our regular board meeting of Tuesday, September 3rd. My record is 9:09. Call vote, please.
Commissioner Barone.
President.
Commissioner Sanchez.
President.
Commissioner Rometo. Commissioner Blankenhardt.
President.
Commissioner Duran.
President. Mr. Sergio Cortova, would you do this in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undrawn, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cortova. Commissioners, approval of the agenda, amendments, withdrawn items.
Chairman.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes, I'd like to amend the agenda. I'd like to add to the Steel Fire Department, he'd like the presentation, so I could go under Commissioners' Report under 12B.
Commissioner, if it's under Presentation, and we probably could hear it earlier soon, so he doesn't have to be here.
Okay, great.
We could do it under, probably, 7C, because that might speed it up, so you can...
That'll work. That'll work. And also, Mr. Chairman, if I may...
And that's the Rio de Janeiro?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, that's 6C.
Oh, 6C, sorry.
I'll stand right through.
Okay.
And also, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, under Commissioners' Report, I would like to get Mr. Rick Dallas to touch on the water transfers. We're supposed to have a meeting the 27th of August. I was not aware that it had been canceled, and I would like to bring that back up, just to have him explain. I've got some of my constituents that have been asking me questions on this, so I need to get that clarified.
Okay, under, under, item B on Commissioners' Report?
Correct. Okay, I'll be.
And Commissioner, maybe we will swap those two, so that we can get that discussion, because then we can adjourn instead of possibly, so we might swap those, if that's all right with you.
It'll work. That'll work.
We'll make that, let's make that item A, and then let's make the 911 issue B.
That'll work.
Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Any, anything else, Commissioners?
Staff? Mr. Chairman, item 7 will be taken off. We didn't get proper legal notice on that, and so that item will be brought back in front of the Commission, and to next regular Commission. So that's item 7, the contract. The only other thing, Commissioners, under the Managers' Report, I also wanted to talk about a tour that was going on here in Taos County, and so just a brief report back to the Commission on the MFA Oversight Committee who visited our facility.
Anything else from staff or Commission? If not, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Call vote.
Sir.
We have a motion, and a second. Call for vote, please.
Vice Chair Rometo. Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Chairman Barone.
Yes. We'll go on to move on to item 5, Citizens' Concerns, Discussion and Consideration Regarding the Following, and citizens wishing to speak shall limit their comments for five minutes. I know I did have a request, Mrs. Cortova, that we allow her a few additional minutes. We will do that, as long as it doesn't go too long. So anybody else that would like to wish, that wishes to speak, for another Commission? If not, Mrs. Cortova.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Five minutes might do it. I thought we had three minutes to speak.
No, no.
So, I can talk fast, but I'm going to introduce myself. My name is Dr. Catherine Cortova. I'm a teacher and a writer, but I also do volunteer work in the community, and so I am coming to you with one of my volunteer situations. I know that the Attorney General is looking at a ruling whether the Mother's Day funding was legal or not, and that's what I came to discuss. If the Attorney General says that it was not legal to do the Mother's Day funding, then I am going to request that you consider the alternative of funding the Taos Living Treasures. I'm going to give you the little history of the Taos Living Treasures. For 23 years, this program existed in the community, and it was to honor the elders. We honored the elders of three different cultures. So the two pueblos were involved, and the rest of the community was involved, and people were allowed to nominate those that they wanted to have as treasures. Then we had a couple of judges that would select. Our judges were also chosen by a formula, so that we kept everything, I mean, even heal and fair, et cetera. So we were very pleased with that. Now, the town of Taos and the Taos Center for the Arts were the cosponsors of this. We had a budget of $2,000. Probably by today's standards, the economy's working at maybe $2,500. My own history with the Taos Living Treasures is I was one of the co-chairs. Holly White from the Taos Center for the Arts was the other co-chair, but I wasn't always the co-chair. My husband, Arsenio, was one of the co-chairs, and I don't know if he did this on purpose or not, but he was going to school to get his second master's degree, and he said, "I'd like you to do this for me." And I said, "Okay, fine." I really enjoyed it, and he saw that I enjoyed it, and he also enjoyed not having to do it, so he said, "Well, you get to keep that." However, it was fine with me, because I really, really enjoyed it. Now, I did have a history with our mayor. I was his teacher. We got along very well, but this particular year, which would have been the 23rd year of the Taos Living Treasures, he became quite angry with me, because my husband was on the school board. They were, people were pressuring the Secretary of Education to get rid of the school board. I found out that the mayor had gone to the Governor and the Lieutenant Governor to ask to have Arsenio removed, and I just didn't think that was right. So I wrote him a letter, but it was a letter for me to him, like for person to person. I didn't address him as mayor in the letter. I also sent it to his home. I got a letter back on stationery from the town, calling me immature, and I understand you all have been called immature by him also, so that might be, we're all immature, so we're in this together, okay? But then a real shock came when I was having breakfast at Michael's Kitchen with a former student, and Arsenio called and said, "You're on the front page of the Journal." And I thought it was a joke, and he said, "No, you're on the front page of the Journal North. Your letter to the mayor and his reply to you is on the front page." I was kind of shocked, because I never met the media with my situation. I went directly to the mayor. Then we called a public judges to select our living treasures, and they did select three people. The three people were Chad Mitchell, Jeff Northbrook, and Edelie Truchail. I don't know if the mayor was informed who was chosen, because the very day after the judging, I got called into the Taos Center for the Arts, and Ron Asherwood informed me that there would be no more living treasures. The town was not funding it, and they were not cosponsoring. Oh, I felt like somebody had slapped me one, and I thought, "Well, I know that this is an attack on me." I don't know if they knew Jeff Northbrook was selected or not. That I don't know, I can't tell you, but Ron Asherwood from the Taos Center for the Arts had agreed that we would try and do it anyway. I had called the musicians, because they would get a little bit of money for the fund, and they agreed to do it for free. I would not be able to afford an ad for the Taos news. I knew we couldn't afford the caterers, so I called people to donate food for a reception. I had all the reception fixed up, except for the money for the paperware, you know, the lemonade, the coffee, et cetera. And Commissioner Barone said, hand it over, I don't know if you remember this, Commissioner, said, "You would give me $300 for that." So I thought, "Okay, I've got this taken care of." One of the things that was part of the living treasures, besides the budget, was that we would get to have it at the Taos Convention Center. So Ron Asherwood said, "Well, we'll just have it here at the TCA." A couple of days later, he called me and said, "We cannot do it at the TCA. I need $1,000 for rent." And quickly, I thought, "Well, the town owns the TCA, so I know what this is." Because I didn't have a venue, and it was just getting very, very late, I thought, "Well, we cannot do the living treasures." But there was a lady named, oh, Edelie Truchail, when I called all the treasures to tell them, she was the one that was most disappointed, because her son had already bought a plane ticket. He was going to be her speaker. Every living treasure got to pick, seven musicians and a speaker, two hundred and fifty. Her son had already bought the plane ticket, so he came. He came just to spend time with his mother. I felt terrible, so I thought, "Well..." My son, William, went and made certificates. I bought frames, and I framed them, and gave the three treasures their certificates. Taos pueblo had not picked anybody yet, so we called them and called that off. "Don't pick anybody, Governor. We're not having it." Ecuadoris did not have anybody, so at least we did an attempt to try and save it, but it didn't, it was too late, because we were notified maybe less than a month before the event. There was a lady named Anna Bryson. Anna Bryson was a Taos living treasurer. She founded the Santa Fe Living Treasures, and then moved here and became a treasurer. So Anna said, "I am going to take over the Taos Living Treasures," and I think the former treasurer should do it, and I thought that was wonderful. I don't need to be a part of it, but I want to create an awareness so that we can get this going. So Anna, unfortunately, passed away. She wanted to ask Martha Dick and Metalia Martinez to help her. I don't know if she got that far. I thought, "I'm keeping my nose out of it until I see if there's any interest," but that's a possibility. Also, if the county would pick this up, we would have to have a venue, perhaps in Juan I Martinez Agricultural Center. So who paid for this little bridge that happened? The elders are the ones that paid. I didn't pay, because I'm not a treasurer. So I feel that if we can get this back, if there is that money available, I would like you to consider that. The Living Treasures was culture, tradition, and bringing people together, and that's what the Mother's Day thing is, so it's pretty comparable, I think. And I would like you to consider it, depending on the Attorney General's ruling and whether or not there's a bill of the living money. I just give it, create awareness. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cortova. Commissioners? Mr. Cortova?
Ms. Cortova, just if I could ask real quick?
Yes.
Approximately, what was the budget for the living centers?
It was $2,000.
$2,000. Just so that the Commissioners were aware.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think by today's standards, it would have to be like $2,500, because the cost of food, this one, we had a full reception, plus music. The whole county was invited, by the way, and we did have people from other areas of the county that were involved in the past.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to the Commission? Not, we'll go ahead and move on to, under Presentations, Discussion, Consideration, Consider Regarding the Following, and Mr. Sadio, are you ready to go? Okay, we'll go under a presentation from Cristus St. Vincent's Regional Medical Center, Bruce Tassen, I believe it is, and Pablo Sadio.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Our President, President Tassen, should be here in a few minutes. He had emergency calls, we were driving up to Taos. So the purpose of his visit today with the Commission is simply to introduce himself to the community. He is, he's traveling so out to north, central, northern New Mexico, just to introduce himself and to explain a little bit about what Cristus St. Vincent's is doing, and wants to reach out to the community of the county of Taos. A little background on Mr. Tassen, Mr. Tassen's been with Cristus for about 23 years. He's been the chief operating officer at Cristus since, for the last five years. He's originally from Louisiana, and in April, when Alex Valdez was appointed to head up the advocacy for Cristus, and is now in San Gabriel, Chile, they appointed Mr. Tassen to be the new president and CEO. Although Alex being a northern New Mexic-- and most of you know Alex, Bruce felt that he needed to be out in northern New Mexico to make sure that we, the jury, that residents of Taos, Taos County were going to get the best service that they can. Of course, we've been in touch with the CEO of Holy Cross, and there's patients in north, central New Mexico that need Cristus, many of them go to Cristus for specialized services, and he wants to make sure, the President wants to make sure, that we're going to provide you with the best service that each resident of Taos County deserves. So that's really the only purpose that he's here for, is to meet you, and on a personal basis, and to see what he can do.
Mr. Sadio, if I'll allow him, when he comes in...
Appreciate it.
...to do that presentation.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Should we take one listen? Would that be, that would be possible? So we have a motion to table, we have a second? Second, and we have a second. Call for vote.
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Chairman Barone.
Yes. We'll go on to item B, a presentation from AAA Home Care, Ms. Penny Gregory.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Great.
How are you? I'm delighted to be here. Good morning, all. I appreciate you gentlemen listening to me this morning, and I want to thank you right off, before I even begin my remarks, for your service and for everything you do for all of us in this county. You have difficult decisions that you must take, and we respect and appreciate each of you. My name is Penelope Gregory. I'm called Penelope, or Penny, or my favorite is Panoply. It doesn't matter, I answer to it all. My company is AAA Home Care, and I've been operating in northern New Mexico, not just Taos County, but northern New Mexico, for almost 10 years. I have some brief remarks for you this morning regarding what we do, and I want to thank especially Commissioner Sanchez for having invited me this morning, and we've had a personal encounter around his mom, and it's been really wonderful, so I want to tell you a little bit about that. And before I do that, I have a packet for each of you, if you'll mind. All right, thank you. And if you need more information, I do have more with me this morning. If you will open your packet, you will notice in the first pocket on the left side, you have a list of the services that we provide, and I wanted to be sure that I tried to differentiate what we do from the medical models that you may be familiar with. We do in-home activities of daily living and day am for the elderly and the disabled all over northern New Mexico. We do nothing medical. We don't do hospice, that's an add-on. We don't do nursing, that's an add-on. We don't do dialysis, PTOT, speech therapy. These are all called ancillaries, they are add-on. Your core services are what you see there in that list, and that's what we provide. Now, I took the liberty of going online and looking at each of you and your profiles regarding how you chose to, you know, speak to the people of the county regarding getting elected to your positions, and I noticed that to each of you, it seemed that it was really important to provide jobs. So I'm here to tell you today, I am a for-profit company. I'm not a nonprofit, and I provide at times close to 50 jobs in northern New Mexico, as do all of my competitors. The second thing that you will see in your packet, there is a model that says, "Do you need home care or home health care?" And the two are really quite confusing. Home health care to the general public would imply that you are having medical services, changing of catheters, feeding, you know, G-tubes, feeding tubes, you're having nursing come in. That's basically what the public calls home health care, and there are a lot of companies in northern New Mexico who provide those ancillaries. But my competitors and I all provide home care, and we use what are called personal care attendants. These are folks that go in and do these assistance, the kinds of things that you see in my list there, what we provide. They assist our folks with these various activities of daily living. The next thing that you will see are our standards and competence, and I want to point this out, because, you know, it is very important when you invite someone, or when you ask, or when you must have someone in your home who is unknown to you. It is critical that the provider of that individual, that employee, has done a thorough job of screening. We do a nationwide FBI background check. We check the New Mexico court systems to see if anybody's had any kind of legal issues. We also check what is called the Employee Abuse Registry, to see if anyone has been reported for abuse, neglect, or exploitation. We provide an in-home monitor who goes monthly to see the client and the employee while they're in the home. We do drop-bys that are unannounced to show, to make sure that our employee is doing their job, but most importantly also, to check in with the client, perhaps when the employee's not there, to find out and get the real picture of how things are going. So it's very important that you find a company that's going to do this for you, and we certainly do. Then, on the next page, on the next pocket, I mean, the right side pocket, you will find some testimonials. If you go to our webpage, if you go to our Facebook page, you will find more testimonials. I just chose to include these two. One is from the family of Maria Gonzalez from Oron, Orojo, Hondo, who, the family wrote us a beautiful testimonial. She was our client for many, many years. Some of you may know the family. And then there is another testimonial from somebody in Orojo, Sehco. But again, I want to make it, make it as relevant as I possibly can to you folks that we serve all over Taos County, from Amalia up on the Colorado border, all the way down to, you know, the Rio Riba, and we cover the entire county, sorry. And then also, you are the first folks to be provided, let me see, oh, I'm sorry, I've got to get something out of my jacket here. This is hot off the presses. This is, there's one for each of you. Please be aware, this is a draft product. You folks are the first ones to see this. As a volunteer project, I have put together a directory. We've been working on this for some time. We're doing this directory of senior resources, and, you know, you do have the draft product. I'm sorry, it's not the finalized product yet, but if you would let me know today, if you would like to have more of these directories for your constituents, or if you have somewhere that you would like us to take these directories and leave them, you know, where your constituents can find them, would you please let me know, and let me know how many you may need? It gives people a list of the discounts that are available to them locally, then it gives them lists of those things that they would find, you know, probably more important, like who are the hearing specialists, who are the eye specialists, the clinics. This is a fast way for them to find what they may need in your district. And I believe, let me see, that's it. Questions, please? Anybody have questions?
Commissioner?
What's the price of this?
The price of it? It is a lot of sweat, and that's about the price. You know, I've paid people...
No, 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 what do you charge?
Oh, okay, we are paid, thank you for the question, yes. We are paid by the state. I'm a Medicaid contractor for the state. I am certified in Taos, Rio Riba counties. We also serve Western Colfax, and we do private duty. We charge base rate $16 an hour, and if you take more hours, we actually do have private duty clients who are taking over 80 hours a week. That drops your fee down close to $13 an hour. So it's a slide, you know, depending on...
So you stayed at Medicaid.
Sir?
If you're under Medicaid, then...
Beg pardon?
If you're under Medicaid, then you're eligible for this?
Yes. Now, how do you get someone on these services?
How about Medicare?
No Medicare. That's a medical model. That's the best way I know of trying to differentiate the two.
And your rate, as you say, stayed at $16.50 a month?
$16, base, for six hours, private duty. If it's Medicaid, the state reimburses. You pay nothing. Now, how do you get qualified? Well, you must qualify two ways, medically and financially. The first one is the financial. You must take, you must make a call, if you want to come to my office, we do this all the time, or if you want to call me. I'll give you a phone number where you could call, and if you need help, as most people do, I will help you.
Okay.
Call, and we will get you registered, and then they'll send you a packet. You take your paperwork to the Human Services Department. They qualify someone financially, and it's important to remember that they waive certain things so that more people can qualify. And then I give you the paperwork to take to the doctor, and we'll get you qualified medically. I send it in to Molina in Albuquerque, and people get on services. That is called the Personal Care Options Program, and it is an entitlement program, and I want you folks to know that in 2014, Human Services is telling us, we providers, there will be 175,000 more people placed on Medicaid in this state. A lot of those folks are going to go into entitlement programs.
Penelope, for the camera, would you maybe give us the phone number that people can contact us?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Barone, for your question. It's 575-758-2902. It's toll-free, 1-866-929-2902. And if you will call me, I will help. That's what happened. Larry Sanchez called me, Commissioner Sanchez called me, said, "I've been calling, trying to find help for our folks in northern New Mexico, our elderly and our disabled folks, and I have not been able to get a call back, any, 'Can you help me?'" And I, so I jumped in the car and immediately ran out to his location. We visited about it, and that's how I came to know Larry, and now his mother. We were at Human Services the other day, visiting with them. He has an 87-year-old mother, that means, you know, some companionship, which is one of the things that we do.
No, I am, Mr. Chairman. You stated minimum of six hours, how many hours in a week?
Six.
Every day?
No.
Or once a month?
Totally. Now, you could, you know, some people want two hours, three days a week, some people want three hours, two days a week, but we can, you know, and we do the errand running and the shopping and the kinds of things that people find these days very challenging, especially if they have no family. As you are well aware, one of the major problems is that family members work, and so there's no way they can be in the home all day, caring for their elderly or disabled loved one. So it is important also, again, I emphasize, it's important that we provide jobs. We have a great many family members who are serving as personal care attendants for their family, their loved one.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Gregory, thank you so much for jumping on board on this. I did contact Ms. Gregory here last week. I had been calling people in Santa Fe, where I didn't ever get a response from those folks, so I was, I went into West Lumber and seen her at it, so I called hers. No sooner than, probably an hour and a half later, she was in West, delivering the paperwork, and she really showed interest in this, and I think it's something that's much needed for our citizens out there, you know, they spend 24/7, 355 days by themselves. I think this would be a good program to get in our area, Amalia, I can mention, Ms. Gregory, Amalia, all the way down to Penasco. And I did go down to Human Services along with Ms. Gregory, she was supporting me. We went down there and talked to those ladies down there, and they felt that this is something that we needed to get on board with, and as we got out of there, Ms. Gregory made a phone call, and the packet is on its way for my mother, so, I mean, that was quick. And I thank you so much, Ms. Gregory, for your hard work and your heart, and put all your heart into it. and your heart, and put all your heart into it. And I think that's what we need to do. And Commissioners, this is something that I think we need to jump on board and take care of our seniors out there. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So we'll go on to item C then. Rios Costilla Fire Department.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. I'm just here to ask for help on a mutual aid agreement with Colorado.
If you will state your name for the...
Floyd Lobato, Art. I'm here because I've been having this difficulty for about fifteen years getting into Colorado. We're next door. We can't see them burn. We help them. They help us. But we're not covered by no insurance or nothing. We go into Colorado. And I've been talking to Pacheco with Sandy, his attorney. I went to Carver's attorney, and I got to Barbara's attorney, and it never passes nobody's desk. And the other day, Sando was called, he's still coming, called Commissioner Sanchez, and asking what was going on, and he didn't notice about it. Because I thought we were going to push it eventually. I've been pushing it for a long time. We've never had no say. So I didn't know until you guys told me what to do next. But then, Mr. Sanchez called me, and I have a copy of the contract. It's a simple new contract for us to get into Colorado. Just saying that they're not liable, that are, it's our responsibility. They come and help us, we can help them. You have to call and ask them for it. It's been a long-term subject. There's no need for it to go this far.
Chairman, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Lobato, thank you for coming, you know, taking time off your busy schedule. But I'd like for you to present to our attorney, Mr. Malone, that contract so we can review it, and I think that would be done.
Yeah, I'm ready. Mr. Malone?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Sanchez. That proposed contract was brought to my attention. I reviewed it. It was passed on to Alan Sanchez because Alan is our county fire chief, and that would have to be agreed to by the county fire chief. I don't see any problem. We are going to have to make some revisions to the contract just for legal purposes, but it's being reviewed by Alan Sanchez now. So it's in the works. Apparently, it didn't get anywhere with other folks, but I... You know, I want to move it forward, but I do have to have it reviewed by Alan first.
Chairman, Mr. Malone, thank you so much. You know, I think this is going to kind of clear the water now that Mr. Lobato came down. Now he knows that it's in our hands. And Mr. Malone is very responsible. I know he'll take care of it.
Thank you. Another thing, I have another problem. Our communication in Costilla, our cell phones, they put that tower, our communication for nine-one-one went down. We're in bad, needy trouble right there. I have no communication. We're very staticky, very bad communication with the nine-one-one since that booster went out, that tower went in. And it's from the tower towards Costilla, first back. And from the tower that went in, we don't have no problem. I got two firemen on this side that have no problem. But on our side, it just, it went down, and we don't know what to do. The sheriff department's having trouble. The animal's having trouble. We're having trouble.
Mr. Arch, is it possible we can, you know, the people that presented to us on that cell tower, we can make contact with them and see if we can get that cleared up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we can look at that. I know that part of the contract also stated that we could actually put our own dish on that tower if we needed to. Maybe that would help, do you think, if we did something like that?
It might help, but we need help. They have to use their cell phone to call me or their phone to call me from nine-one-one to the house.
So since the tower went up, there's been interference from anything north and east of that tower, then?
That whole south, that whole north-south, and a part of the west part. But not towards west, it's not.
Commissioner Sanchez, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, also, Mr. Lobato. I did talk to Ross Kaufman, comment, and he did say that he would put something up there for the emergency. So I can also get ahold of him, or I'm sure the structure that has some locals to take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. So we'll go ahead and move on to item eight. Resolutional ordinance, discussion... I don't see that Mr. Sanchez will tell us. We'll go on, move on to resolution ordinance, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following. Resolution number two thousand thirteen dash four five, a resolution amending and repealing Resolution two thousand twelve twenty-two and establishing rules and regulations for the Taos County Indigent Fund Claims Program.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Chairman and Commissioners, I bring this resolution forward. We needed to clean up some language and do some changes. We did, by the request of the auditors. So I'll go page by page. Is that good, Mr. Chairman?
Are you just going to touch on the, I guess, the blue light version?
So on the first page, we have this language cleanup, changing it from courthouse to the administration. Our office did move two weeks ago, so we are housed in the administration building. On the second page, we deleted some language on the top. Did you want me to go through the language that we deleted, or?
Sure.
So on four, a child or a minor is emancipated when the minor reaches the age of majority eighteen or has an area prior to the age of majority. And then also, there's a note, whatever is stated to the Internal Revenue Service will apply as to them seeing this status has changed. So we took that language out. I don't think that language really needs to be in there. On B, oh, I'm sorry, on four, which was five, we added juvenile. We kind of reversed the language there. It's on B. We did a clarification. We put, we added, "Who is legally obligated to pay said minor's medical expenses?" So we added that provision. Then on two, we put, "For persons to qualify as an indigent patient, their liquid assets may not exceed ten thousand for a single person and twenty thousand for a family." The reason we added that was to suggest by auditors. That number that I came up with, which is the ten thousand for a single and twenty thousand, I referred back to the other counties. And a majority of the counties were, they were using that dollar amount.
And I just have a question on that. So, you know, when you talk about liquid assets, how are you addressing if they're, they own a, I guess, a lot of them don't own, but they're making payments on a car? Or...
A car may be charged with assets.
Unless they own it. Now, if they own the car, it's a liquid asset.
We'll be going over an application later on. And I think basically what we were, the definition of the liquid assets. And if I can have Mr. Locas, he helped diligently working on this resolution. So I can...
Chairman, feel free to come up to the mic. We should open just so that this gets recorded.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Mrs. Hara Miel just handed you the statute, Indigent Hospital and County Healthcare Act, section twenty-five, five-one, and sec. And in the definitions under indigent patient, which is twenty-five, twenty-seven, five, four, C, the language in the proposed amendment to the ordinance correlates to that definition. And it says, "And who can normally support himself and his dependents on present income and liquid assets available to him, but taking into consideration this income and those assets and his requirement for other necessities of life for himself and his dependents is unable to pay the cost of an ambulance transportation or medical care administered, or both." I don't believe that the statute has a definition of liquid assets, but has that reference to it. So in response to your question, I think the determination will be made that if it's cash or anything readily convertible to cash, then that would be considered a liquid asset. Otherwise, it would not be. So I guess if he owns the car, and the car is in excess of ten thousand dollars, the value, I'm not sure that that would qualify as a liquid asset. And that determination would be made by the, by Mrs. Hara.
All right.
Okay. And that also will be, the liquid assets, that will be not equating because previous, we were not addressing liquid assets. On residency, it's just basically cleaning up the language. No changes there. On page three, it's just clarifying on income. We added for partners. On other assistance, that's also just cleaning up language. On page four, on the top, it's also cleaning up language. On C, it's clarification and language cleanup. So here, what we did was, it's with the application process. And for the clarification, an application is due for one year. And then, for each claim that is submitted, would have to be attached with an affidavit declaring that nothing has changed on that application. On D, the changes there is going from nine months to six months. And what, the reason for this is because the nine months, what's happening is people are waiting, and they're running to collections. And I think that's kind of causing the problem why so many people are running to collections. The hospital gives them a hundred and twenty days. So I think if we change that, that still gives them the six months, but also with the commission approval, they still have the extension of the ninety days. On E, it's just language clarification as well. Payment of claims. This is just, we're changing it to reflect the state statute to be in compliance with the statute itself. So here, it's from the actual cost, from the hundred percent we're paying the hospital here in Taos County going to the Medicaid rate. And also with B, that's the outpatient, cleaning up that language as well. On the next page, we have the ambulance service. This is a change to reflect the state statute to be in compliance that we will use the TARP, which PRC regulates, and will pay out at that cost.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner? Going back to paper of claims under C, there used to be fifteen thousand a year. Now it's going to be...
It's always been twenty thousand.
Oh, it's been twenty...
Okay, so then, G, it's just language cleanup. H is unclaimed burial claims. Since we pay for burial for unclaimed bodies, we have added to alternate the service among Taos County funeral homes. On page, let's see, page six, that's just language cleanup as well. And then on the last page, language cleanup as well. There's no changes, other than the application and the verified statement. Just clarifying that as well. So that's basically it for the changes on the resolution. Is there any questions?
Do you have one question on your alteration, or, I mean, when you, the funeral homes?
Uh-huh.
So let's just say we have some unfortunate, that somebody dies at Holy Cross Hospital. How, when is the determination made where that person goes? I mean, is it after, I mean, because they don't hold them long at the hospital. So then if they go to, you know, the local one, I think there's only two, I think one in Questa and one here?
Correct.
And so when is that determination? And who transports those? They come and get them?
Well, the way that I read the statute, it should be going to OMY. And then OMY is supposed to contact our office if they're unclaimed. And then we should be making a determination on who would be providing that service.
And the only reason I ask is because OMY had a problem with transporting somebody, if they had to transport them to Holy Cross, all the way to Questa. I agree that, you know, there should be split. But I, that's why I'm asking you, is OMY on board with this? Because if not, it's not going to happen. And maybe that's not our determination to make. We just need to work with OMY.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that the actual funeral home is the one that actually does the pickup. The issue that OMY had was that they would have to send one of their persons up to that area. But again, if the individual's at the hospital or if it's on the scene, that OMY comes before that individual goes, then that would be the mileage that they would have to do to do that. If it's a situation where there's question about it, then OMY would actually possibly transport that individual to Albuquerque for the autopsy. And then at that point, the funeral home would actually have to drive down there to pick them up. I do know that there has been an arrangement that has been made with Ribetta Funeral Home here in Taos to store the bodies at that timeframe. And I'm sure that's something that can also be worked out with the other funeral homes that we do too.
Okay. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Also, Mrs. Hara Miel, Floyd also, I want to thank you guys so much for, you know, this is something we need to, you know, for autophases, we need to get cleared up. They don't want to come and back at us. And Mrs. Hara Miel, I'm glad you touched on the actions. I've had some, like, constituents call me, and, you know, they're upset or they're worried about what's going on, you know. They don't want to be sent, nobody wants to be sent to collections. And also, I'm glad you touched on the Medicaid rate. You know, I mean, we had been paying a hundred percent. Now, that could be brought down correctly. Except, my understanding, are we paying the Medicaid rate instead of the hundred percent?
Yes, Commissioner. And that's actually, the state statute states that it's Medicaid rate.
And then just going back to that three-H, you know. And I think all funeral homes will prosper for this, which is going to be a share. And I think it's, we need to let one guy, business handle one time and the other, you know, let's share. I'm just glad you guys got on board and took care of this.
Also, Chairman and Commissioners... Also, Chairman and Commissioners, on the funeral home, it will, I mean, it should be alternate, alternate, but there's going to be some times that that may not occur for several different reasons.
So can this will then speed up the process not only for the constituents, but also for our ambulance service? You know, and possibility of less findings during our audit process?
Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I just want to touch that. Again, thank you Floyd and Tammy, great work on this. We've had a lot of discussion on it. In speaking with the auditors just before they left and we're still having, we'll still have another outgripping with them. They've addressed almost all of the issues that have been found in the audit and the audit. And he said that he really didn't feel that there would be any issues in the future. Reference that. You'll also see that there's an application process that has changed. Ms. Harameel will talk about that later on. She's also been meeting with Holy Cross Hospital to lower that rate down and I just want to follow up with the commission to notify them that what that means is that more people will be able to be served by this money because we're paying the lower amount at this point. So we'll be able to spread that wealth among other people within Tous County. And I think that's a real positive for our constituents.
Commissioner Sanchez?
So moved to the I'll second that.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Commissioner Langenhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Chairman Brody?
Yes. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Now, on the blue light version, the actual date of passing adoption somehow got changed to the fourth, but the actual original proposed method to the best solution has the correct date.
Commissioners, it looks, Mr. Passon has, is here now, wish to bring back on the table the item that was tabled. We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Langenhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Chairman Brody?
Yes. So move back up, presentation from St. Vincent's Regional Methodist, Mr. Passon. Presidency CEO. Mr. Sadeo had a feeling for you there for a minute and he said you'd be right here, so.
Mr. Chairman, he does a much better job than I do.
That trust me.
I apologize. I had a call from the hospital and I had to take. Commissioners, I apologize for that. Really, Pablo and I are just trying to go around the surrounding counties that have an indirect effect on St. Vincent's Hospital in the fact of higher acuity of patients and so forth. So really just wanted to get out and see faces, vice versa, and talk a little bit about the State of the Union and what's happening with St. Vincent's as everybody's going through, including Holy Cross. And so my name is Bruce Tossen. I've been at St. Vincent's for five years. I've been with Christmas House for 23 years. Actually came out of the central Louisiana region back five years ago. Wife, daughter, daughter should graduate from St. Mike's, is at Baylor University, so hopefully she does well, so dad doesn't have to continue support long term as everybody else would be thinking. So very excited about that. Santa Fe is a great community for us. Our goal is to provide a higher level quality of care as it relates to acuity of patients. As you know, we're a Level Three Trauma Center, trying to move to a Level Two as regards to coverage. We have 24/7 neuro coverage, orthopedic trauma, general surgery and so forth. Holy Cross and us have worked very closely. Mr. Hosteller has been really tremendous to work with. We try to be very, very careful in ensuring that we don't duplicate services that he can cover your hospital in this community and really just add the other aspects of it. And that's why we put Neurosurgery Rotational Clinic up here. We want to continue to support you in that way. I guess our biggest issue today, probably that you have been struggling, struggling with along with us, is the 115 waiver, which is a good thing, which is Centennial Care to expand Medicaid for our state, which is very, very important. But as Peter probably has expressed to you along with others, funding has been reduced for our state as it relates to SOCOM provider funding and the cap aspect, about fifty million dollars, which caused the state to build into the waiver, a substantial reduction of coverage for healthcare. Now, as the waiver implements in January, we should see more people get covered by Medicaid and exchanges. But it will not be overnight. No matter who says it will be, it's going to take several years, two, three years for those individuals to cover. And it definitely will be a shortfall for SOCOM provider hospitals, including Holy Cross. If you look at the aspect today, there's sixty-nine million in the 115 that's set up for basically the smaller hospitals, including Holy Cross, which is totally appropriate. So anybody over 200 beds would be excluded from that initial sixty-nine million. So St. Vincent, San Juan Regional, and then Los Cruces Memorial would not be included in that original batch. Now, those three hospitals cover sixty percent of the Medicaid population, in the engine population. What the state thought they would be able to do is go to the counties and obtain that 1/8 gross receipt tax. And as I think everybody in this room would know, including the other counties, there's a lot of counties that use that 1/8, not just for hospital engine, but of engine, which is appropriate. And I think there's a little bit of a block between the state and the counties in figuring that out. And what we're trying to do, the three of us, so San Juan, myself, and Memorial is any way we can facilitate getting the parties back at the table to come up with a resolution or solution would be totally appropriate. What we're looking at right now is January, as you know, Centennial Care goes into effect. There's no agreement on that additional funding, so that would basically leave no funding from January through June. And if no resolution, there will be no SOCOM provider funding for those three large regions for the future. And as you probably are struggling with, even the small amount that you would be getting now, the sixty-nine is still not enough to cover what you need to run your operations. And so you're going to see overall throughout the state, service reductions and cuts. So I think it's really a serious issue that we've got to work together and figure out how do we get everybody to the table to figure this out. It's not that there's no money to leverage, there is money to leverage until Centennial Care gets in. It's just coming up with the funding source to get us to that point. So again, it's not necessarily a request, but more of just acknowledging where we're at in healthcare in New Mexico. And our goal is to continue to be able to provide that higher level care for the outreach hospitals and people involved and so forth. So just want to give that a little bit.
Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Tossen, just a couple of questions. Reference the 1/8. Has the state come up with any other plans? I mean, initially they just basically said this is what they're going to do and how they're going to do it. They obviously meant they had resistance at this point. Has there been anything else that's been discussed, referenced the 1/8?
We had, Pablo and I and others have had several conversations with HSD and tried to brainstorm in other opportunities. So for instance, if Tous County had 1/8 and they only use 1/16th for the hospital, is there a possibility that you go county by county and say, here's 1/16th of the 1/8, please take it, use it for the hospitals and make sure our engine are covered? There's a little openness, but there's also a little openness. I think they have basically looked at the entire package based on the 115 and tried to pull it all together to get that approval. And I think the way we really have to do it is get back at the table and have both sides at the table and have somebody else in the middle just trying to facilitate, here's some other thoughts on how we can do this. And we as hospital association would love to sit down and work with the two entities to come up with a resolution. Because at the end of the day, it's only hurting all of us. It's hurting our community, it's hurting the state. So we've got to come up with some resolution. But I think they're stuck. I think they're stuck in think really the resolution is a 1/8. And there hasn't been a whole lot of openness to that. I did meet with Liz Devon at Santa Fe County Friday. And she's open, you know, from Santa Fe County perspective of having a dialogue from the two entities sitting down together. So I think there is an opportunity, but we've got to start moving a little bit more quickly instead of just doing long heads because we're hurting the population we're trying to serve.
And just, just for the sake of the commission, it's my understanding that at the federal level, there's actually money that's being left on the table. And so there is the funds that are available if we can figure out how to draw down those funds or how we can do the matches for the three to one on that. One of the things that we had thought during the legislative session this last time, and actually the hospitals were the ones that sort of put a stop to it because of the federal oversight that was being looked at at the time, was in-kind services. For example, Tous County basically has signed a ten-year lease with Holy Cross Hospital at a rate of, I believe, of seventy thousand per year. If Tous County could go back and justify that for the square footage that the hospital has and the amount of building, it would come out to more like a hundred and seventy thousand per year. On a ten-year lease, we're talking close to a million dollars of in-kind services that Tous County is providing to them. Is there any movement that we can do in the aspect of talking to the federal government in that? Because that would be the three to one matching on the federal level, which is the money's there, to see if we could do in-kind services.
Yeah, I think, I think that's still an option on the table. I think there's some legal advice out there that's differing on whether you could use that to leverage a match. And I think a lot of counties got gun-shy on that because of the QTAN lawsuit and so forth. And I think there's still legal expertise out there to say that still is a possibility. I think it's really just kind of brainstorming it out with the group and saying, well, let's find a legal counsel that may represent, whether it's the commission of counties and so forth. And really getting, okay, here's what we researched and here's some thoughts and kind of passing it back to the state to take a look at and say, are you open to this? Is this a bottom in means? I agree with you. First thing I asked the state was, well, surely you have a secondary plan? Surely there was a secondary plan just in case somebody said no to this aspect and there was not. And I think again, as you said, we've got to continue to research to see if there's any other opportunities out there because it's going to affect our constituents. Thank you.
And Mr. Passon, you know, one of the biggest concerns is, you know, is if we're going to take that money and give it to Santa Fe and let them decide how to spend it. Unless there's a way that they're going to actually leverage that funding to get more money, then there's not a problem. But to take the money that's actually generated here in Tous and then give it to Santa Fe and let them decide how they want to spend it. You know, it's just, it's just crazy that we would do that. Just like the other portions of this, I guess, mental health care and stuff that was cut and now there's an Arizona company coming in to run that. I think that's, you know, and we have people right here in New Mexico that are just, that are capable of doing that same work. So, you know, that's, you know, we all have that concern, we share that concern. Unless we're leveraging funds to create or to get more money for our community, we would hate to see that particular gross receipts go away and go to Santa Fe and then let them distribute it.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I totally agree. I think that's part of the piece where HSD, good people, but I don't think they've done a good enough job to say, okay, let's lay out what the impact would be positive and negative for each county by doing this. Because right now, it's like, trust me. And I think it's got to get back to, what is the true impact to my county, my constituents? And we're going to continue to push that with HSD. You know, the pool, the pool that the 1/8 would bring, and this is something Pablo and I just got to talking about. One thing they said clearly, that the 1/8 across the state would bring more money than there was a match available. So that means there's, there's extra dollars that now the feds have capped on what the true engine bucket is. So the first thing I would do is go back and say, well, you know, for Tous County to ensure that you're getting your engine pool, here's what would be needed out of that 1/8, it's not a hundred percent. And I think that's one of the things that we could do to help push them to say, lay it out by county, here's what you contribute, here's what goes back to you, and here's what supports the other counties. That you may send patients to like Santa Fe and so forth, but making sure that home's taken care of too. So I agree with you.
Commissioners, anything else? Thank you all for your time. Thank you. Appreciate you coming up and making the presentation.
Nice to meet you.
Move on to item B, Resolution Number 2013-46, a resolution authorizing the county of Tous to pick up nine point three nine of the municipal general member coverage of Plan Two member contribution in effect July 1st. Mr. Corbano, finance director.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, actually the two resolutions in the packet have been changed. Mr. Malone is going to be handing them out. The county actually carries three plans. We carry a police plan, a detention plan, and then the general member. So Resolution 2013.
Chairman, these were not organized. It's like, please hand it out, Doctor. Hold on a second. Let me, let me hand it out. I have apologies. Twenty thirteen, forty-six is the question we're talking about.
Forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight. And actually, it's okay with the chairman, I kind of preface all three of them and then we can get into the specifics. But like I said, we have the three plans. What we're proposing was what we came to you with around budget time. Combine down the one percent of the para for all employees and as part of the amendment one to your collective bargaining agreement with the collective union. So number forty-six, it's a resolution authorizing Tous County to pick up five point six two percent. I know we agreed on one percent, so that may sound confusing, minus five point six two. It's the five point six two percent comes from the total percentage. So we're taking one percent of the total percentage, which equals five point six two. So for this plan in particular, before the state mandated a one point five increase for all employees, as of July 1st, the county police plan was paying, employers, employees were paying sixteen point three percent. With the one and a half increase, that went up to seventeen point eight percent. By lying down the one percent, now the employees will still be paying sixteen point eight percent. So they still get an increase, however, it's not a severe. And the five point six two percent is basically sixteen point eight divided by seventeen point eight, so it gives you five point six two. The county is allowed to take a maximum of seventy-five percent of that. So you can see the county is being pretty conservative at this point and only taking the five point six two. Something else to mention about these is that they are irrevocable. If it's passed today by the commission, you cannot take it back later on at another time. So by picking up a one percent today, it's irrevocable in perpetuity. So another good reason to take it slow. Instead of taking a whole seventy-five percent in one chunk, you know, taking a little bit at a time gives the county a little bit more flexibility going forward.
And Mr. Corbano, when this was presented to us, the impact, the financial impact it would have, it has not changed from the day that was presented to today?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you know, the impact is the same and we feel that it'll be absorbed through reorganization plans that have been underway and also through vacancy savings and just in general, we should be able to absorb this throughout the year.
Anything else?
No, if you have any specific questions on each one, you can go through each resolution, I suppose. Like I said, forty-six is for the police, forty-seven is for detention, and forty-eight is for the general member.
So Commissioners, we're working on Resolution Number 2013-46. We have a motion to approve this. So moved, I'll second. Any further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Commissioner Langenhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Chairman Brody?
Yes. We'll go on to Resolution Number 2013-47. Mr. Corbano?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, same as before, as I mentioned, this is the detention plan. The original amount the employees were paying was sixteen point six five. With the one and a half mandated increase, they were up to eighteen point one five and with this one percent buydown, they will now be paying seventeen point one five. And the total percentage is five point five percent, one percent.
Commissioner Malone, Mr. Archuleta, everything is legal and proper and this is a recommendation of statute. From the legal perspective, it is, the math is, is, Mr. Corbano, I'm not good enough on the math. Recommendation from statute. So need to approve? We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Commissioner Langenhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Chairman Brody?
Yes. Resolution Number 2013-48. Mr. Corbano?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is for the general member coverage plan. Originally, general members were paying fifteen point six five with the one and a half percent increase. It went up to seventeen point one five and with the one half percent increase, it went up to seventeen point one-five and with the one percent buy-down, they will now be paying sixteen point one-five for a total percentage of five point eight-four percent. Is that recommended?
And, and, uh, just, Mr. Malone, uh, this, since this probably affects all the Commissioners too, is this a conflict of interest?
It's not a conflict of interest, Mr. Chairman.
It affects me as well. Honorable Chair.
Well, in that case, I'll move to approve.
We have a motion. We have, and a second. Any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Uh, just for a little information, if I may, Chairman, the next move will be the para board will review these and many other local governments that also passed these on their twentieth, uh, September twentieth meeting. I think she'll approve them all at that time and then we will get approval from there and come back and report to you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Commissioners, we should take a five-minute break. So move, uh, we should take a five-minute break. We have a second, call for the vote.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. So go on to department matters, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following indigent fund. Mr. Miss Tammy Caramillo, indigent fund coordinator, approval of revised indigent fund application.
Good morning, um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, so what I have here is the revised application. Um, the previous application, the current application, I should say, is ten pages and there's two issues. Is, um, is this, the current application, we're addressing the assets, which will also be an auto finding. Um, and also to condense the application, um, I mean, ten pages is quite lengthy, but also, um, what was happening is since the affidavits were attached to the application, we had clients that felt that they would fill out the affidavits, not submit the required documentation. So what I have done here was condensed it, um, added on the new application assets. So the application is two pages with the attached affidavits. And these affidavits would be filled out only when the information or the documentation um, that the client can't provide, if they've lost maybe their, uh, tax forms or, um, whatever the circumstances may be, that they're unable to not provide that, if they've lost their warrant letter, they would be able to, uh, fill out that affidavit in lieu of providing that information. And also, um, on the new application packet, if you'll see on the fourth page, um, is the indigent patient declaration statement and affidavit. This is, uh, the affidavit that will be attached to every claim. Um, so if there's multiple claims, they would have to fill this out stating that nothing has changed. Um, because what is, what does occur is that somebody will apply in June and then another event will happen in November and circumstances can change. So we're just covering to make sure that everything is the same and that they do, they are eligible.
Now, Commissioner, yeah, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have a question now. Over here where you say this following documents must be returned? Uh, how, you know, cause there's a lot of people that live in this county that work for cash.
Right.
They don't have no checks, uh, nothing like that, no? How, how are you going to work that out?
So at this point, they, um, and they'll fill out the affidavit of income.
Take zero income.
Whatever income even, um, you know, maybe ten dollars or twenty dollars a week or whatever it might be, they just put in a dollar now and it's a sworn affidavit of that's what their, their income is at that point.
And, uh, let me ask this, that's another thing, the tri-state care flag. You know, there's been, I know that this is a fact, too fat, no? See, they call out the helicopter and then they refuse it? Or you know, there's are people that, you know, have zero income or they don't work or work for cash. How's that on the work, uh, they're just going to lose out on the flight?
Well, um.
Does it state to there, no? That it will not pay for tri-state care.
Right, in the past, we haven't paid for.
Yeah.
But what, what they do, um, what they have done is, um, is if a client is receiving the fund, they will reduce it, um, and they'll, they can make payment arrangements. But at this point, um, we don't cover that. But it, also, I do want to state that it doesn't stay in the, in the state statute that we cannot cover it. So that's something that everybody's might want to think about.
And then how do we, I guess, how do we determine, you know, it says Taos County indigent does not pay for and it has kind of a list of, so basically, it, it will pay for, um, I guess, stabilizing the person and, but let's say the reason he went in to the hospital was because he had a compound fracture to the arm and he needs a specialist to put that arm back together. It doesn't pay for the specialist.
Correct. If the specialist is within, um, the hospital, but we, we won't, the fines will not pay for the doctor bill, which at this point, Holy Cross, UNMH, um, they will give him a reduced fee or they'll write it off if, um, they're aware that they're receiving this fund.
Okay. Commissioner Sanchez, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, also, Mr. Caramillo, are veterans also, uh, can they, can they apply for indigent funding if they?
Yes, and we have had clients that are veterans.
Oh, good, great, thank you.
Commissioners, anything else? And, and, Mr. Caramillo, is this, you know, did you take, I know there's other counties that have the same application and is it kind of?
Um, Mr. Chairman, this application is actually Mary San Juan's application.
Okay. And, and their findings are minimal with the others and that type of?
Yes.
Commissioners?
Chairman.
Go ahead.
Um, Commissioners, I'd also like to thank, um, Matt Trivio, he's helped on this application and Floyd, the business law.
Yeah. All right. Commissioners, the wishes.
Uh, I'll move to approve. Are we asking for approval?
Yes.
I'll move to approve then.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Anything else, Caramillo? Call for the vote.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. Thank you, appreciate it. We'll go on to Housing Department, Mr. Rick Bellas, Deputy County Manager, approval of a repayment agreement between Taos County and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Mr. Bellas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a standard form agreement included in your package from Housing and Urban Development for the repayment of forty-five thousand dollars, which, uh, occurred last year as part of the investigation, had to do with capital, uh, fund program. And, uh, we had agreed at the time, uh, with the findings of HUD, uh, we were waiting for them to get us the letter to do this and, um, the money is in the budget, uh, it's in the litigation fund in legal. Yeah, I guess I stand for any questions.
Rick, how did this come about again?
Uh, when the county took over, one of the things we saw was that the capital fund program, uh, didn't have a really good set of books. So we went back through it and determined that there were a number of suspicious items that didn't seem to have appropriate documentation. So we requested, uh, to come back and do another audit of that fund. It was the, uh, American Recovery Act money, which falls under a very tight standard set by Congress. And HUD agreed with the finding that some of the documentation, there was not sufficient documentation to explain what happened to the money. So they require that, uh, the part you can't explain, uh, be returned to them. And since it was gone, we cannot use HUD's own money to pay it themselves, so the county has to pay that.
And no, nobody was held accountable, I guess, would be the proper term for, for this, or, or they're not willing to go that far to the Department of Housing and Urban Development?
Uh, it was my recommendation at the time that if he turned over for prosecution, uh, for the county manager, or Martinez at the time, decided that that was not an appropriate course of action and it kind of got a little bit of a, um, argument with HUD over that it was their fault and they should pay it.
Okay. Commissioners? Mr. Chairman, do we know how that money was spent?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I, I can give you my opinion from looking at the bucks, but I mean HUD's official finding was that there's no documentation to support those expenditures.
What was your opinion?
Um, we entered into, uh, the former executive director entered into an agreement to do the house-by-house program and she tried to do a project which was, uh, extensive renovation involved a mobile home and replacing it. It required that an architect be involved, but there was no money available under the house-by-house program to pay that architect. And it appears that what happened was there was an overpayment on a stucco job, which went bad and that amount seems to pretty much match up a payment to the architect for the job on the House of Hills program.
Okay. That lead that, thank you.
So, uh, what you're asking is, we gotta pay hot forty-five thousand? Forty-two thousand?
That is correct, Commissioner. Again, this is money we put in the budget because we knew that, after last year, we would be paying.
So it is in the budget?
Yes, it's in the litigation fund.
And this, Chairman, I mean, just fairly, this goes back to when the housing authority was really, really being run badly.
Uh, this, this is over two years ago, over two years ago.
And what if they don't pay it?
I believe they will.
I think they got an argument there. They're the ones that should have been on top of this to begin with.
I, I believe that, uh, normal process is to file a federal lien against the assets of the county. Uh, and since they're the source, the same agency is the source of our CDPG money, I don't know that that's a good bargain. I think we'd rather get the five hundred thousand than the forty-five thousand.
But I mean, wait till we get, we didn't get the five hundred thousand this year, so.
I'd be concerned if we wouldn't get it for, while this is a litigation fee, so. Recommendation of staff?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, Mr. Bellas basically has said his staff has put that in there, we knew that this was coming down the pipe, we had been trying to work with HUD, try to figure out alternatives or how we would not be responsible for it. It was done prior to the commit this commission taking over the housing authority and our recommendation at this point is to that we will pay that forty-two thousand and we will move forward in that aspect.
I'll move to approve. I'll go ahead and second, uh, I do have concerns if there's any way that we can steal before we send the check to try to negotiate. I don't know if that's any possibility of that, but just put us on the.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, there, there were, and the county attorney was present, uh, we're involved in negotiations with HUD and MFA for moving the housing authority as a, as a bigger albatross into a regional entity. Um, in all likelihood, as a result of, um, plea bargaining that former executive director just made, there, I can say with certainty, there will be another set of numbers at which because she exaggerated the number of tenants, we received more money than was, than we were entitled to. And HUD can make a claim for that. However, HUD has agreed that the actual amounts that were fraudulently obtained, they will recover from the executive director and her, and the other parties that pleaded. And any administrative fees, uh, they are willing to apply on our behalf for federal relief from those. So, um, the forty-five thousand, uh, is the only money because it was under the Federal Recovery Act and, uh, Congress appointed an oversight committee that they cannot forgive. So this is about as far as we can get. I think, given their willingness to not hold us, uh, responsible for the over one point two million dollars that disappeared, this is not a bad deal.
We have a motion, a second on the floor for any further discussion. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. Uh, let's see here. Go on to budget matters, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following budget line item adjustment. Mr. Cordova, finance director, Carson Volunteer Fire Department.
Chairman, Commissioners, um.
Mr. Chairman, if we may interrupt just for a second, we just want a clarification.
Mr. Chairman, I think we had a two-two vote on that last plan.
No, no. It was, uh, Commissioner Sanchez abstained.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear that.
I got the one on the main of the box.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, before you leave, Carson Volunteer Fire Department is asking for a budget adjustment to, um, add twenty-five hundred dollars into his professional services line item, taking it from both maintenance of buildings and structures and maintenance of vehicles. Um, the purpose for the increase in professional services is to help, uh, with some of the related costs of the purchase of the volunteer fire department. This is some of the closing costs and certainly an allowable cost from the fire protection fund, so we prefer to use statement when we can.
So move to approve. Second? Any further discussion? Not called for the vote.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. Uh, under housing, Mr. Cordova.
Chairman, Commissioners, uh, the housing department is requesting increase in temporary positions from both the low rent and the section eight, and the amount is seventy-five hundred each, total of fifteen thousand, but taking amount of the full-time positions from each, um, and this is the budget adjustments needed to increase the temporary positions. We've just hired someone else in that, um, and I think because of the potential short-term operating, it makes more sense to use temporary positions. Hopefully we can get it up soon.
Commissioner?
Chairman, Commissioners, uh, was that a local who was hired?
Uh, yes, everyone at the housing authority is, uh, is a resident of the county and has been for over a decade.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner, where do we go get a director?
Mr. Bellas, you wait a minute, sit down.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Duda, at the next meeting, I will give you a copy of the letter from MFA and HUD that outlines the timeframe. Uh, but very quickly, to your, to your point, um, the third week of this month, they're meeting to put a new regional board together and at that meeting, they will release an advertisement for a new executive director and they intend to, uh, hire somebody, um, within the first three weeks of October.
Okay. Thank you. So Commissioners, have your motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, like I just mentioned, our final budget was approved last week by MFA, so I hope the chairman should get a letter releasing in the mail. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, go on to county matters, report and matters, discuss and consideration decision regarding the following. Mr. Arttled, you wanted to discuss the NFA visit and, and.
Yes, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you very much. I just wanted to take a minute just to talk about, uh, MFA was in Taos County for a meeting here. We had the other four above, Richard Sanchez, Gina, Elam, Mark Torres, Mike Trujillo, and also the RTB bus transportation system, bring the members over to Taos County. We did a complete tour of the facility, uh, they were very impressed and they were really excited about how the funding through MFA occurred for Taos County and then also how this building was built. And so I wanted to just to alert the commission and let them know that it was important that all these people took an active role. We met with them and, and everything went really, really smooth, and I don't know, Mr. Cordova, you want to add a couple of other comments to that?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, if I may, I just want to thank everyone as well. I'm new to the county, but I, I know a lot of these legislators, and it was great to have this wonderful team that built this building, show them around, and they were truly impressed. I got very positive feedback throughout the week that they were getting useful league, and it just goes to show that here in Taos County, you can start and complete projects, and that's going to be part of our push for capital out there this year, and this is a great example of why they should get less money in Taos County.
Thank you. Thank you. Stephen, is it possible that we can write a letter, you know, to the two entities and just thanking them for their visit and the NCRTD for their role?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, we'll get those letters ready for signature. Would you like to be a signature on that?
Or yourself as well.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else under the county matters report?
No other ideas.
Okay. Under Commissioners, report matters, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following, we go to item A, water transfers. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes, Chairman Commissioners, I've been getting calls from my constituents in District Two of the Questa area, and they wanted to know why the August twenty-seventh meeting was canceled. I was not aware of it myself. In fact, I just picked up my package yesterday, Questa, so they got a concern, they, they, they wanted an answer on this, and I guess I'll connect this to Mr. Bellis.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. I'll just pass something out to everyone. Uh, this is a copy of the report that was generated by staff as, as a result of the meeting of the Board of Advisory Committee. And if you look into the, on the first page, the second to the last paragraph, the key there is the line that, um, on August fifteenth, last publication to twenty-second, any person, firm, or corporation or other entity having standing to file objections or protests shall do so in writing within ten days after the date of the last publication notice. So that was, would have been Sunday, um, the, um, the state law doesn't recognize working days or United calendar days, so it was necessary to hold a special meeting if the committee was going to recommend its findings and the county needed to file an objection before the deadline. It would have actually had to be in on Friday or, and, uh, to be stamped by the office, the engineer's office. We scheduled a special meeting for the twenty, uh, twenty-seventh, I believe, and then we were unable to get a quorum, and part of the reason for that is, I believe, one of the commissioners was at the town. Two of the commissioners were involved in the meeting we had with the town and Ryan Gleason that day. We looked at everyone's calendar and tried to see if between Wednesday and Thursday we could get a quorum, and it didn't look like we could. I know some folks were attending stuff that was here for legislators, the league of municipalities, the association of counties was here. So it was a, really was a week, and I advised Ms. Matthews that we would be unable to do that. She, I guess disagreed with the reasons. However, I did have the paperwork that there were two other objectors to the case, a ditch and an asequia who actually have standing where technically we don't. And that there's nothing that, as I explained to you, Commissioner, nothing that would prohibit us from attaching any comments we have or objections or concerns to any of the packet, to the package that either of those objectors would file. Once they file their written case, they have the opportunity to appear and verbally present their position before the state engineer's office. So that's kind of where we are. I don't think anybody's been hurt by this in, in either way. I will say it was a very divisive issue. Again, by the next meeting, I hope to come back before the commission with some recommendations to ask if you can take a stand on some of the bigger issues, such as are we going to involve ourselves in objecting to cases that don't transfer water out of the county, um, that are part, cases that are part of the abeta settlement where we know that the state engineer and the interstate stream commission have stated that they are going to approve them anyway. Or where it's a case of transfer between two ditches or two asequias or an asequia and a ditch, by which the bylaws for our water advisory committee state that we do not have standing to intervene in those. And this case has all of those. In addition, we have some legal questions which we will be trying to get answers to from the state engineer's office, which make me believe that this transfer might not actually happen. One of those is that the water was, the water rights were severed from the property over sixty years ago and have not been used at all. So we have a question, how can there be water rights to sell if by not using the water rights, you lose them? And they have not exercised them over that period of time. In addition, one of the objectors, which is a ditch association, is a question whether they actually are legally a ditch association, and whether the people claiming to represent that, it may have to be the Artegas, I believe, actually are heirs to the rights on that ditch. So it's, it's complicated, even the water advisory group itself didn't come to, it was not unanimous in its decision. And I think you're going to see a lot more of these, and it would be very helpful if, if we have some guidance from county commissioners.
Mr. Bellis, may I, so you're saying the timeframe, is that?
Yeah.
Is that the south of the Wendellville?
Yes.
Okay, so then, that's what I'm getting, the calls from my constituents, they should have acted on this and not dropped it. So now, it just creates a bigger problem. And then, I got some calls from constituents in the Questa area that owned these water rights, and somebody's claiming that they own, so how do we clear that?
Um, Commissioner, that, first off, let me say that, again, we need, staff needs some guidance, because this is an advisory group, they don't have any authority other than to make a recommendation to you. And when they do that, they need to make a record for that. They, they can't just say, I don't like this. They, they should really have some finding of facts, some finding of law, some findings in hydrology. The second answer I would give you is, I'm sure Mr. Malone will say, is that we, we as the county, based on the state constitution, do not get involved in land disputes or water rights disputes. We have no standing to do so.
Okay, I'm, I'm directed from this one. How do I, for my constituents, District Two, how do I direct them to fight or move with this legally so they can recover their water rights?
Commissioner, Commissioner Sanchez, I think the best thing to do there is have them go see Mr. Stephen Lopez, or the gentleman who gave the presentation about the, about the water rights. I would go there first.
He was with the state engineer's office, Mr.?
That is the, that's the step.
Do we have that? Yeah? In it? Okay. All right, thank you.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Bellis?
That's it.
Mr. Chairman, question. Mr. Blackburn?
Thank you. So this is the second one that's come up before our Water Advisory Board. The first one was, of course, from Gallagher Ranch to El Prado Water and Sanitation. The Water Advisory Board went through a similar process before that, and they recommended to this commission, I guess in two thousand and twelve, to oppose that transfer. The second one that came, of course, was this one here, and as Mr. Bellis explained, there wasn't a time within that ten-day period when the Water Advisory Board could come before us to make a decision whether or not to oppose it. And, and so that's how it works, that's how it's going to continue to work. I believe that we should bring back the opposition to El Prado and consider that within the context of this knowledge that it's going to continue. And of course, as I've said in the past, it's, it's my opinion that we should not thwart the abeta settlement by filing oppositions to water transfers that stay within Taos County. Each of those water transfers were, um, part of the abeta agreement, and each of them are designed to allow all of these entities to serve their customers. So asequias have parciantes and, and water and sanitation districts have clients that they supply their water to. They need water rights in order to continue to do business, and abeta has set that up. Abeta has, um, provided the funding and the apportions for each one of those entities. And for Taos County to oppose each of those as they come, because maybe they go from Gallagher Ranch, which is in Commissioner Sanchez's district, to El Prado Water and Sanitation, which is in the chairman and my district, doesn't make any sense. You know, because eventually, the state engineer will approve those because the state engineer was part of the abeta, but in the meantime, we, uh, it, it requires a hearing that just costs a lot of money in attorneys and hydrologists that will be taken from the fifteen million that was, uh, granted to Taos County to settle all these disputes. And so I think it's a debate that we have to have and, and make a decision once and for all, whether or not we're going to continue this process of opposing these water transfers. So I'll ask again that, that staff bring the El Prado Water and Sanitation issue back to the commission, and we can address that specifically, and maybe we can have a bigger discussion about the rest of these that are bound to come in the future.
And Mr. Chairman, may I add, Questa's in dire need of water, you know? We are in dire, that's why I'm advocating for my constituents up north, you know? It's not something that you just turn your head, you know? It's about to go live, I think it's something that I, I as a representative, I make sure that we can iron this out and, and deal with my constituents. I have something that's very important, I've been getting calls on it, I gotta act on it.
No, I understand that, Commissioner Sanchez, and I agree, you know, the town, the municipality of Questa is in deficit, they cannot continue to serve their clients, and unfortunately, they were not part of the abeta, and I think that we should do whatever we can to work with the municipality to find funding either through CDPG or whatever method available for them also to purchase water rights. But we're not talking about a transfer from the municipality of Questa to El Prado, we're talking about an individual who owns property, has water rights, they haven't ransomed it, they don't intend to ransome, so they want to sell it. And, and the money is available through abeta to buy it. The problem with the municipality of Questa, which I think is all of our problems because they are our constituents, is that they don't have the funding to purchase the water rights that they need to keep their system going. And so, you know, I'm with you on that.
And Commissioner, I think what you're going after is big monies from, from Washington, you know? Why not sell to their locals? People just gouge, you know, big monies in the pocket, you know? That's what, that's my complaint, you know? The only thing Questa cannot pay what the Washington's paying.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I agree with both commissioners, and believe it or not I do, um, we've put some language in the land use code to try to provide some incentives that would encourage people to transfer rights for water and land into a bank in the county that we could share or to at least sell them locally. So hopefully we'll also have that for you next week.
Mr. Philpkin, you wanted to comment?
Yes.
Follow along.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think what we're kind of ignoring, and I, I'm highly opposed to the town's assessment of this whole thing, abeta and the regional water plan were going on side by side simultaneously, and everybody at the table in the regional water plan was very careful to not do anything that would infringe on abeta. And now it seems like it's the other way, that abeta is suddenly taking priority. The county was not, was not at the table in abeta. And you had a team of people in, uh, working on the regional water plan that were representing the county and working in the county's interests, so I would be very careful about prioritizing abeta over, um, over what's already in the regional water plan. And this committee is highly skilled in, in, um, in what we all agreed to, and there were multiple parties, like the asequia association and like the town of Taos, that were in both. So there's a little history that, um, that I haven't had it all with me, but, um, something to consider, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Commissioner.
Uh, you know, what I will do, I'll take this back to my constituents and get them Stephen Lopez's number, let them, they talk to him on this.
Especially on the who owns the water rights.
Exactly.
I mean, I don't think that's a kind of funny one to give.
Don't.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else that wanted to? Commissioners, in lieu of our agenda, we're getting down to the end, and we have one more item, and as a report, discussion, and possible action regarding E-911. Commissioner Romero would like to be involved in this, he asked, since the day we provided the agenda, because he was at a family gathering, and he will be available at like, who, Mr.?
Twelve, twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty, maybe we can take lunch and, and come back at twelve-thirty, and, and then we can get that taken care of. If we have a motion to break for lunch. So, and? So we have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. Second session. So move, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion, we have a second. Second, and second, call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. Commissioners, under the Commissioners Report Matters, under better be a report, discussion, and possible action regarding E-911, Commissioner Romero, Commissioner Sanchez, I know you guys did attend some meetings with Arhan, I was gonna say Arby, oh, excuse me. Ryan Gleason. Steve, you wanna start this discussion, and then Commissioners, Commissioner Romero, if you'd like, can you possibly feel in, and then Commissioner Sanchez, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Steve?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff, there was a meeting that occurred last week at the request of Commissioner Blankenhart, Chief Commissioner Omedo, Commissioner Sanchez, and Mr. Gleason. There was also a lot of people from the community that came out and asked certain questions and had some comments for Mr. Gleason. After that meeting, we actually went over and toured the Kit Carson Center with Mr. Gleason, asked questions there. We were met by Mr. Luis Reyes and Taos staff from the E-911. We were also told at this meeting that at three AM that morning, the Taos 911 dispatch was going live. It's my understanding, and I haven't had an update on this, but. but it's my understanding that they have two desks running right now at 911. Is that correct, Mr. Bellis, or is it still just one as of today?
We're unable to confirm that.
Okay, so, we knew they had one desk up and running. We were told that they would have two up and running shortly after that. Just to report back to the Commissioners and Commissioner Sanchez and Commissioner Romero can also fill in on this. Mr. Gleason actually started his talk early on on the E-911 and basically mentioned to the commission and to the viewing audience at the time that if there was not a consolidation, there's a possibility that Taos County would continue to lose the money that is in there. It's my understanding that there's a fifty cent tax that is put on every phone line within Taos County, and that's whether it's a cell phone tax, whether that's a landline, or any other business tax that's out there. And so those fifty cents go into this pool of money, which runs up to millions of dollars. And then thirty-two counties across the state of New Mexico actually are then given that money, and that's where the telephony for Taos County was coming, or for the... For Taos was coming out of this year. It equated to a figure of about three hundred eighty-seven thousand. There is one community, the community of Alamo Bordeaux and Otero County, that at this point do not have a consolidated PSAP. And Mr. Gleason reported that they had lost over a period of time over a couple million dollars, because you add up to three hundred eighty-seven thousand or whatever they're missing out every year. That fifty cent tax that their community is still paying for will go to other communities, and on some level is warning Taos County that if we went under that same umbrella of not having a consolidated dispatch, that we would also be losing our constituents' money a fifty cents a pound. We advised Mr. Gleason at the time that we were in the process of packaging all of our CDPG grants, all our capital outlay grants, and everything that we were doing, and that we had actually put money in our budget in order to do that. And so we didn't feel that we would be hurt in the future, other than that loss of three eighty-seven that goes out there. In addition to that, Mr. Gleason also reported that there was about forty-five to fifty thousand dollars, and we couldn't confirm those numbers with him, that DFA is currently paying for the 911 dispatch. That forty to fifty thousand dollars is something that DFA pays out of this fifty cent tax that's also there. And again, if we do not have a consolidated dispatch, that again would come back prorated to the county. So, if the city and the county had a split, the county would probably pick up about fifty-five percent of that. The city would pick up about forty-five percent of it, and that's just based on the numbers that we had. After the tour of the Kit Carson facility, we also came back and toured our own 911 proposed building here at the county, and we spent some time with Mr. Gleason at that time. That's it in a nutshell. I know Mr. Malone was there also, and staff was there. So, if staff wants to also mention anything, and I also invite the two commissioners who are present at this meeting to also report on that.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Romero, what do you want to move with, Mr. Sanchez, and then with staff?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I appreciate the ability or the commission to allow me to make some more out today. I wanted to ask, I don't know if Mr. Richard Sanchez is there, to explain the condition of the new 911 building to the rest of the commission and the individuals that are there.
He is here, and we'll get him up there, Commissioner. Mr. Richard?
Thank you very much. And of all this, pretty much that is the concern that I've had all along is whether or not this building is the ideal location for a PSAP system to be able, for the entities to conduct the 911 service. I also wanted for someone there, possibly Mr. Rick Bellis, to describe to the constituents the conditions for the status of the new equipment that the town has acquired from the E-911.
So, on your first question, Commissioner, as far as Mr. Richard Sanchez, you were talking about the Kit Carson Command Center?
Correct, the correct, the new building that is, or the building that is housing the new PSAP system.
Okay. Mr. Sanchez?
Chairman, Commissioner, Mr. Manager, Commissioner Romero. During our tour on Thursday, and on a previous tour of the building that I was there, my biggest concern is with that structure, or that during its construction, the owner, Kit Carson, opted out of the New Mexico Energy Code, which requires commercial buildings to have a certain amount of insulation in the walls and in the roof, which will considerably add to the utility costs. The building was constructed out of poured concrete with a superstructure of steel and no insulation in the walls. Concrete walls are eight inches thick, and depending on which study you read, poured concrete walls have an R value between point zero eight and point one one per inch. So, at the best, those walls are insulated one. At the worst, they're insulated point six four. That's basically like leaving the door open on your house. I mean, you build a house and just put plywood on the outside, you get the same amount of insulation. That's not a recurring and ongoing cost for as long as you're in the space. The other big concern I had, it is in the floodplain. There are water marks on the sidewalks and whatnot from some of the larger rings. I don't know if water infiltrated the building or not. I've seen pictures of the building under construction, and it was waterproof with the same product that was used here, which is a good product. But if water levels go up, there's always a possibility of water getting in through the doors and whatnot. The other thing that I saw that was missing is lightning arrest. All our buildings have lightning protection, which with electronic equipment is very important. It's a metal roof over there with, it tied to the steel inside the building, and I didn't see any lightning protection there, which is probably going to be another twenty thousand dollars, I would think, for something like that. So, those are my major concerns on the construction aspect of the building. It's a sound building. It's not going to be, if you do any growth or changes, it's not inexpensive, because everything has to be cored through the walls. It has to be surface mounted, it has to be hidden in the ceilings. It's a tough building to deal with.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sanchez, how about the construction on the floor? There are people that are on our feet all day long. Is it safe to cross?
It's concrete, it's concrete malleolus.
You were talking about RE.
Commissioner Romero, you still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, power went off. It's on, I guess we're probably on backup.
Yeah, I'm generating.
Or backup, I'm generating, so.
The concrete on the ground floor is a concrete floor, slant upgrade like we have here. And the second floor, the mezzanine part, it is constructed with concrete, just like we have here in our facility. So, it's a good floor, but it's got carpet, it's, it can be tiring if you're walking along.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Richard, the building's been in use for a couple of years. Have you looked at the utility costs?
I have not seen any figures of the utility costs, I have no idea. It's electric heat, which is another thing that I don't think anybody in northern New Mexico, or at least Taos County, being the cost of electricity compared to natural gas or even propane would heat their home electricity. But it's electric heat and electric chilers. Chilers are similar to the chilers that we have here, which are smaller.
It'd be good for staff to get us some utility costs to see. This is speculation about that, to see what the costs have been and project what they might be in the future.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we were provided all the bills by Luis Reyes, and they came out. Last year was the first full year for it to be occupied, and we can measure all of that, and the total was thirty-nine thousand.
What are you here?
Pretty here.
And how, well, Richard's gone now, I need to ask Richard some questions. He's probably taking a call for the power. Yeah. So, Commissioner Sanchez, you have?
Yes, Chairman, Commissioner, Commissioner Ometo, thank you for being on board with us here. One thing that was not mentioned was that handicap accessible. I know we touched on that. It's got an elevator going down there. Something happens to that elevator, what will happen?
But Commissioners, all elevators in all buildings, multi-story, doesn't make any difference. If the fire alarm goes off in the building, the elevator is shut down. So, just like our building, if our fire alarm goes off and somebody's in a wheelchair, you would have, they would have to be assisted through the staircases to get out.
And also, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ometo, we did touch, and I talked to the lady there that was with us on the tour, and that was one of my concerns, was the insulation, you know? And I think Commissioner Duda's brought up a good point, you know? People are going to be walking on that, seeing that, what can we do to take care of our employees? This is another thing I brought up, is it gonna, we'll probably have more people calling in sick than would the walls where they are, you know? Coming COVID.
And Commissioner Romero, Commissioner Sanchez, I understood, and I just want to, you know, that the building might not be exactly what we want. The building that we are trying to come up with on our own is a building that you guys feel is ideal. But for us to get to that point looks like is a little beyond our reach at this time. Is that correct, Commissioner Romero? Because of, you know, what in this meeting that you guys attended, you know, in hospital, getting our telephony equipment in order and brought on, and getting fences, getting generators, the whole process to make our building accessible, because I think we have three commissioners that want to continue to move that way. But yet, we need a place to go at this point until we can do that. Is that correct, Commissioner Romero?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the fact that you have stated what we have discussed, you and I, I hope, over the last couple of days. I have had the great opportunity to be able to meet with staff and to go on site visits to really excellent 911 dispatch facilities in Santa Fe County as well, and in Valencia County, just south of Albuquerque. And have had also a meeting with the former dispatch employee, who is very knowledgeable from A County about that New Mexico. And all of these businesses have, in fact, informed us that for us, for the county to develop its own 911 dispatch center, it's not going to take a matter of a couple of weeks, even four, five months. But it's a process that is going to take anywhere from eight months to a year. So, I believe now that the mayor court of us proposal has come to the table, I believe it is something that we need to look at in an effort to keep our constituents from Taos County, our residents from Taos County, safe and comfortable in knowing that they have 911 service when they need it. And so, Mr. Chairman, I am in agreement, and I hope the other commissioners are as well, that we need to look at other temporary measures, even if it includes having to work jointly with the town at this time under the circumstances that they've already moved over to the Kit Carson Command Center without much advice or input from Taos County or any of the other joint power agreement members.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner?
Commissioner Romero, so then, I need to clarify something from staff. You stated that it would take eight months to a year for us to have a complete 911 center of our own, no? But let me ask staff, how long would it take to get the PSAP in, get everything going? But does anybody have any idea?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, at this point, what we've been working towards, and staff has been working diligently every Monday and throughout the week to get contracts or RFPs in place. Some of the issues that we've run into has been, number one, that we know that the tower or the making of the steel for the tower is going to be about a four-month timeframe. That would take us into about the middle of January. They are on state contracts, so we don't have to go through the RFP process for that. So, our timeframe could be about the middle of January for that. The second item is the actual PSAP equipment, and that is with whatever company we decide to. We've been talking to the companies that are out there, and their discussion with us has been about a four-month timeframe. The issue with that is that we're going to probably have to RFP that, and if we RFP that, that's going to take us about thirty to forty-five days, and then four months on that. That will take us past our timeframe, which is past February. The other issue is that we've been looking at a CAD system, which is a state-of-the-art system, and what we're wanting to bring to Taos County. That would allow us for GPS monitoring and those things. That system would actually take us, at our best guess, and then talking to the experts about it, eight months to a year, and then you actually have an additional three to four months of fine tuning that. Now, I just want to alert the commission that the CAD system is not something we have to have in place in order to do E-911 and dispatch. It's something that we're shooting for and want to run parallel with the actual 911 system, but it's something that's going to take that amount of time. But we do not need the CAD system in order to do the dispatch and the 911. And the other thing that we're looking at right now, and maybe some of the experts in the room or staff can tell us, is the switches. And that's really dependent on the light switch, on the phone switches that come in. We don't actually have a date set on those, but it's going to take us pretty close up into our deadline of February.
Let me, Mr. Chalita, but you, if we do not do the CAD system, we can provide that service later date, right?
That's correct, Commissioner.
And then you stated that four months for the, and then not four months for the equipment.
After the forty-five-day RFP, we're looking at two or three different options, actually. Conrad can talk a little bit about the different options that we have out there. We may be able to do it a little sooner, and we're really pushing the envelope on that. But yes, that's correct. After the bid is done, then we actually contract with somebody else to get that.
Let me ask this. Can we just go out and solicit the price, or do we actually have to go out for a RFP?
Commissioner, in order, we've been exploring different possibilities for procurement, but if we do have to go out to RFP, we can't first get a price from somebody.
All right, then, Mr. Chalita, you stated four months for the tower, four months for the... Then, we're still at the bargaining, because the town's going to provide services for us till February. They're six months away.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. I think what Commissioner Ometo, and I don't want to speak for Commissioner Ometo, he's on the phone, he can speak for himself. The discussions that I have had with the commissioners is that he has... is that the experts who have put these PSAPs together have really urged us to take the time that we need to do it done properly. If we rush through the process and opportunity of February timeframe, there's gonna be some mistakes that are gonna be made, there's gonna be a possibility that we could buy some equipment that doesn't actually talk with other PSAP equipment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Romero.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to add the fact that all of the managers of these 911 dispatch centers, the San Ben and Valencia, and even the one in any county, stress the fact that we need to hire an individual that is going to not only operate, design, or design and operate the system since the very beginning, that that individual should be hired in an effort to make sure that Taos County gets all of what is necessary to be able to have it up and running when the time comes.
Mr. Archuleta, you can go ahead and continue.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. I think that really changes it, I mean, we're, you know, staff has been due diligent in every aspect of the E911 system. We're continuing to move forward with the E911, and we'll continue to do that until we're told differently by the Commission, but we also wanna make sure that we let everybody know that, you know, these are the timeframes that we're meeting up against, and we've been pushing staff extremely difficult. I had pushed staff to December 31st so that we could have some training time and other issues, but at this point, it seems to us, and in staff's recommendations, that we're really gonna be pushing that into the first of February or the end of February. The other thing that, you know, the staff has recommended, and that we would recommend to the Commission if we move forward in that direction, is the possibility of having an MOU when both dispatch centers, if we need to, in order to carry us the additional couple of months to make sure that we have that service. My main concern is that we're able to provide that service, dispatch service.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, I'm gonna ask you this question. So you're still in agreement that we move forward on our own, but right now, we probably would have to go there for a while, right?
Correct, Commissioner DuGan, that statement is true. I feel that given the amount of time that it's going to take to put together Taos County dispatch center, and we were wanting to make sure that it gets done properly, that we do need to go on both with the town of Taos at this point.
Okay, let me ask this question to staff. Given, okay, the county's gotta provide us service till February, so, and you're stating, Mr. Archuleta, it will take us eight months to a year to get everything on board, right?
It would be nice to have that time, I mean, you know.
Okay, let me ask this question now. What agreement, or did the town council agree to provide services for us for a long? Right now, what's the agreement, or it's only just?
The proposal in front of the Commission is that the town had not charged us rent for two years at the command center we were in with them, and that they would pick up the $33,000 in lease payment for a year.
And Commissioner, what I would like to see, is I know Commissioner Sanchez has some stadium that he has, and other staff, and Mr. Blankenorn has some, and to get to the, if we decide to go this way, and we can go into executive session with Mr. Malone's blessing, to possibly discuss that lease with all the bullet points or highlights that we would like to see as a Commission, and how long the term would be, and then, and if that would be appropriate, Mr. Malone.
Mr. Chairman, the discussion of the lease is clearly provided for in the Open Meetings Act. There's 10151H8 allows for executive session for the acquisition of real property, and leases have been interpreted to be the acquisition of real property. So in terms of discussing the details of any lease that we might enter, or sublease or whatever, to go over to the Kit Carson, that would be appropriate for, that part would be appropriate for executive session.
Commissioner Sanchez, if that's all right with you, Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Romero, Commissioner Romano, being at the meeting, we had a lot of constituents from Taos County that were there at that meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then, you know, if it's possible, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if we could have the audience come up and touch on what they've got to say, include them in on it, and that's why I go back to our meeting with Ryan Gleason, Town of Taos, that we had a lot of concern from constituents, and I see we've got some out there in the audience, if we could allow them, Chairman, to come and say something?
I will, Commissioner Sanchez. I'd like to have staff complete their presentation in the board, and Commissioner Blankenorn, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon. One thing that Richard Sanchez was talking about on the structural side of the equipment and building, is that actually the building right now doesn't have any, at least inside of the communications or where all the equipment is gonna be located, it doesn't have any fire suppression. And so I'm kinda concerned also that, because there's a high density of electronic equipment in there, that's probably the most likely place of anything starting on a fire, a fire beginning in there, so if a fire started, we really couldn't put it out, and then that equipment would be damaged. What do we do at that point? You know, we're kind of in a real dark area there to get dispatch, and E911 service is going. On top of that, there is no separation in there for NCIC data, because there's gonna be some servers in there that host all of that, and so if there are other entities that are gonna be sharing that roof, how do we protect that NCIC data is another thing that we need to consider going forward in the future. And the other thing that Commissioner Romero talked about, that I believe that we really gotta make sure is that we do this correctly. If we rush this through very quickly, which is the track that we have been on, we stand the chance that we may miss something and do something wrong, so we need to make sure that we do this properly. On top of that, the CAD system is really, as I've said this before, is what distinguishes us from, or what we are trying to do, from the Town of Taos. A state-of-the-art CAD system is really what lets you separate us from them. Otherwise, really, what you just have is just a bunch of equipment in there, and we would just be the same thing that they are, we have the same E911 system as they do, and so we need to make sure that we do have a good CAD system so that we can track our resources that are out there deploying when an incident occurs.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Blankenorn.
Thank you. Well, thank you for that, Conrad, those are all really important points, and certainly if we do end up signing a sublease, I think that, you know, fire suppression system within that.
Mr. Chairman.
One second, Commissioner Romero, Commissioner Blankenorn is, and then we'll get back to you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Romero, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, thank you, Conrad, for that. The, I think, a fire suppression system, of course, would be an important inclusion in any kind of an agreement that we made, as would be the separation of the NCIC data. As to the CAD system, what's the approximate cost of the CAD system, that portion of dispatch that you're describing?
The initial rough costs, and they're very hesitant to give it to us, because it requires an onsite visit to actually look at our needs, but the initial estimate was somewhere from four to eight hundred thousand, depending on what we wanted to do.
And if the town chose to do so, could they install that type of equipment at the Kit Carson building?
Yes, the Town of Taos could definitely put any system that they want, including the one that we saw.
So there's nothing about our building that's particular that would allow that CAD system that couldn't be done at Kit Carson?
That's correct.
And, Mr. Archuleta, in your opinion, staff's opinion, if there was a regionalization between the town and the county, would DFA possibly be a source for some of this half a million extra dollars to provide a CAD system wherever we chose to operate?
My initial thought would be to say yes, but I can't, well, Ellen would probably, yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if they just deal with telephony side or not. I think that's, that's the thing, is that they would just deal with the outside wires coming in, which is the telephony side of the house.
So there are no potential grants for that equipment?
Well, I'm not gonna say that. I think that we can possibly look at that through capital outlay, or CDVG, or something else, if that's something that we wanted to go for.
And with any grant, is it your opinion that there's a benefit to regionalization in trying to acquire any type of grant? I would say yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I can address Chairman Blankenorn's question there. DFA will only pay for the E911 equipment. Basically, they will only pay for the incoming calls, anything that is dispatch or CAD, DFA will not pay for. So if we were trying to find funding for a CAD system, that would have to come from a different source of money. Thank you.
Ellen, did you wanna add to that? No, get back to you, Commissioner Romero.
I do.
Chairman Commissioners, I would like to reiterate what Conrad said, that is the truth. They do handle the 911 portion of the phone call, the answering part of that. So in that reoccurring money for upgrades that comes out about every five years, it's just for the 911 component, phone call side bit, it doesn't include upgrades to the CAD or to the councils or to the radios, that's all based on the agency. If I could add though, as far as regionalization, I think our facility has been a little more receptive with some of the other partners, whether it be Ski Valley, Forest Service, some of those parties that they're more willing to regionalize under our facility than they would under the Kit Carson facility. So even though we want to regionalize, and maybe the Town of Taos's idea to regionalize, I can't speak for the other entities that we're trying to work with right now and build those partnerships, if they would be willing to go to Kit Carson facility.
But the key parties to regionalization, Mr. Sanchez, are obviously the town and the county.
For 911 service to the county, that's correct, Commissioner.
Thank you. And Mr. Ellen, would that building even be capable of regionalization? Is there room in that building to bring the other parties in?
With, Chairman and Commissioners, with the amount of equipment that we were looking at installing for E911 on the county side, and with the amount of equipment that Forest Service is looking at, it is an adequate building. We're looking at probably basically splitting the building in half, they take half, we would take half, the Forest Service was to move in with us.
Now, when you're talking about our building, I was talking about.
Yes.
The Kit Carson facility, I don't know, there's adequate space, but then once again, I don't know what the contractual agreements would be with Forest Service or with some
of the other parties as far as additional square footage requirements. I don't know what the Town of Taos and Kit Carson would propose in that case.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Going back to Mr. Romano's comment about the system, I'd like to echo what Commissioner Blankenorn said, that it's very important that we have the best, the top-of-the-line, state-of-the-art equipment to be able to serve our partners' needs. And it's, I mean, the chairman decides it enough that we make sure that this equipment that we have operating will do that. At this point, based on opinions of even the individuals that are familiar with the Town of Taos has installed in the new 911 center, the equipment there does not meet the standards that I'm looking for over the constituents of Taos County expect.
Anything else, Commissioner Romero?
Not at this time.
Commissioner, Commissioner Romero.
I have this question, okay. Since there ain't no fire suppression at Kit Carson's building, at what cost, if they don't do like that? And say that they don't provide, they don't have the money to do it, then what good does it really do if all their well burns down like Mr. Conrad said? Then what, we're out the window, I mean, then who's gonna pay that money?
Well, Commissioner.
That could happen.
Well, Chairman.
Commissioner.
Commissioner, you're right, but you know, that's obviously a point that can be negotiated, and it can be made part of any agreement. Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that for right now, I think until you seal the proposal is under a lease agreement, the building, I can find it tough that I'm gonna say this, but the building at this point is relevant, because the first goal that we all agreed on way before the Kit Carson issue was that we needed to regionalize and simplify the communications, and that if we, two things, first, I wanna reiterate what Conrad said, which is that we're not going to Kit Carson, because they didn't solve any of the problems, they just moved the equipment, part of the equipment from one building to the other. But if we go out and spend a million and a half dollars and have exactly the same system with the same problems, we haven't gained anything. The other problem is that if we've got $2 million, and we can do the state-of-the-art system, but a good chunk of our population and a good percentage of the area in which traffic accidents, fires, and EMS calls occur, which is the Town of Taos limits in their fire district, which includes part of our county, is a system that's two generations behind ours, then we still haven't achieved what we want. So the first thing is to get everybody to get in agreement, that everybody agrees on the type of system we want, that we all agree to regionalize, and that wherever we build it, whichever building, one partner can't pull out, pull the equipment, hold everybody else hostage, that it belongs to the municipalities, the fire districts, the public entities collectively, and that we have a JPA that locks everybody into that. And we were very, before the move by the town, you know, laterally to go to Kit Carson, we had a JPA that everybody agreed to do that, and create a board, and it was on a model that DFA had suggested to us as being the model that is the best in the state, which is the 911 model, and there's no reason we still can't do that.
Commissioners? Okay, Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Chairman Romano, and the rest of the Commissioners.
Mr. Sanchez, just your name for the record.
Oh, yeah, Gene Sanchez.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Romero, one second.
Mr. Chairman, I know it's important to listen to our constituents, and we value their input and their opinions, their opinions, but I would ask if we could maybe wouldn't the amount of time that everybody takes so that we can hear everybody.
Okay, good suggestion. We usually limit people to five minutes during our recon session, so that.
Can I ask how many people are gonna talk besides me?
I think Mr. Sanchez would be the only one. Oh, you too.
Okay. First of all, this building is permanent to the Town of Taos. Had it gone to the state, it would not have received a permit, because of Mr. Sanchez said. You have to have a certain amount of heat loss limitation from a building. This certainly wouldn't make it by any stretch of the imagination. One thing you didn't mention is the fact you have north and south glazed walls, and it's not little glazing. Another thing, if you had a chance to listen to the record that I cut between myself and the architect that designed the building, he specifically says that the dispatch center that was supposed to have been designed for the Taos PSAP was not.
was not designed, it wasn't even built because there was a, a conflict between the county and the town. In 2007, he, on that disc, says that Kit Carson Electric became his client, and they designed the building to satisfy Kit Carson's needs, nobody else's. And when they took out the permit to build the building, it was a Class B or a plain old office building, uh, permit. So the thing that you are an state-of-the-art facility is just nonsense. Right now, you have equipment in a mechanical room that is supposed to be completely isolated from any other equipment. All the cables that come out of that room into the, uh, dunnawalls, into the, uh, dispatch center, need to be O B and steel conduit. If you had a state-of-the-art building, like these dense saves on one of the DBBs that I look at, is that all you have to do is go and plug in because everything is there. That's not true, not true whatsoever. Secondly, you don't want any kind of a, uh, facility, especially dispatch, below grade under any circumstances, and you are, I think, main floor about five feet below grade. An architect who's going to design the needs for a PSEP or any kind of emergency situation would not put it below grade where you have to go up a flight of stairs. Something else too, nothing is for free. The rent's going to be free, but you're going to have to pay for anything else, I believe. And I'm going to tell you that if he said $33,000 a year for that building, well, I have a pretty big house. I don't go that far, but I, I, I approach that. And I can't believe that a concrete building with glass is only costing $33,000 unless some of the heating circuits are cut off. Next, is, I, they won't let me in there. So is the second floor view isolated from the lower floor? When I was in last time, it wasn't. I understand that the acoustic control is nothing more than outside blue, blue quality foam. And what about the carbon? Is it a Class A if it starts to burn? Is it going to give off that toxic gas that can kill somebody? And let's look at something else too. You come down the elevator to get into this building, but before you can get into the dispatch center, you have to walk through a common space. If you're going to rent that common space, say the Forest Service, the BLM, it has to be completely isolated from the dispatch center. And you can't walk by road through offices to get to the dispatch center. So they're going to have to build a corridor, essentially split that long space in half. There's a lot of things that you have to look at in the building. Uh, I don't believe all of the safety issues that that building need are there because I think it was just the town of Taos that did the inspection. And they tried, they do a good job, but the town of Taos has not even been able to interpret their own, uh, access Egress code. And how in the world are they going to figure out how to determine the losses out of a building such as Kit Carson Electric, see if it complies with state regulations? I think that's pretty much, um, covering. Nothing is free, gentlemen. And I, I encourage you to pursue your own PSEP. I predict if you don't join the town of Taos, they're going to go under in two years. My, my predictions on the town of Taos have always turned out to be right because I have worked so hard with them and I know how they think. And I would say two years is the max, unless you come in and save them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Cordova?
Evidently, Commissioners, my name is Mr. Sergio Cordova. And evidently, the town of Taos has to be the decision for you when it looks like it. Uh, Mr. Darren Cordova, uh, comes and gives you proposals, not to by the authority of the city council, but the authority of the legend, Mr. Cordova. You know, he comes in here and gives all these proposals, uh, and, uh, you know, he's been addressing the Taos news and everything else about the rolling orums that we have with the town council, you know, where they have already made up their minds as to what's going to happen to, to not only to the town of Taos, but to Taos County. Now, I, uh, you have been called to the table at the last minute. At the last minute, after a decision was already made that that command center was a done deal, you were called to the table and, uh, when, uh, when your staff went before the town council, you know, uh, I didn't hear anything at the county commission. Uh, here, chastising them for the way they treated your staff when they went to, before them to try to address some of the issues, that are constituent issues. You know, the, the, the command center was, uh, predicted to be a done deal by, uh, uh, many people in this community, uh, long before it even came to you. The town of Taos is broke. The town of Taos right now is, uh, has, uh, buildings that they're trying to put out RFPs for. They have a convention center, they have the Obranda Hall, they have, uh, the, uh, U N M, uh, have all the Forest Service building, uh, who's could have been used for a command center. They have the old command center. Uh, I attended those council meetings in which Mr. Abeta, uh, uh, said how full of asbestos everything was in the town of Taos. Now they can't find a way, you know, what are they going to do? They're going to sell that property? And, uh, uh, it's, uh, we have to get everybody else in the county to bail out, bail us out. That's, that's, uh, what's going on right now. Uh, the health and safety issue of, uh, the community is in your hands right now. You know, single pane windows at the command center, uh, insulation. Uh, we're paying twice for that command center because we are co-op members. And, uh, the diversity that, uh, that, uh, co-op has come into has been a total failure. You know, I've talked to people about broadband and things like that, which I think is a great idea. But, uh, a lot of people are already saying that they will continue to, uh, work with CenturyLink and that they will not sign up for the broadband. So, uh, you know, as we see that, as we see torn cables, electricity outlets in our neighborhoods while they work on those particular aspects, uh, I have, uh, the feeling that not, it's not going to, it's going to be another, uh, another failure like the propane was, like their internet connections were. And, uh, right now, they are trying to get you to bail them out. Uh, if there are concerns with a building being on a floodplain, which it is, you know, I, we have to deal with that, uh, I was on the school board about building an administration building in the floodplain. Well, you know, the hundred-year floodplain, hundred years are almost up and it's going to, you know, you'd be surprised what, uh, what can happen during that particular time. I, uh, as a citizen of this community, feel that much thought has to go into this. You know, it's just, uh, uh, we like to have our time and everything else. But, uh, I think that the proposal that you, you know, nobody has really told us exactly what the proposal reads from the mayor. But how many years are we going to commit citizens of this county to have a mediocre place, to have a place that, uh, will not serve our constituency as well? Uh, I'd rather pay for that safety, uh, as an individual, pay for that safety of our, of our county than to, uh, take a chance because, uh, our hands are being forced into it. And I caution you that, uh, I don't think that anybody sitting in this room can totally explain what the deal is, you know, I mean, uh, if Mr. Leeson was here, it must feel obvious that, uh, he had already met with the mayor at the famous Casa de Cortovas the night before he met with, uh, with the Commissioners here. And, uh, Taos is a very small community. We know, we know what the background deals that happen are. And that day, uh, after, as I approached Mr. Leeson about that, I think, Alihutu was put his head down because he had met with that rolling orum already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Commissioners, anything else from Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Blankenborn? Uh, just really briefly, um, certainly not this board's intention to see the town go under. You know, we're not interested in seeing the town fail. And if there's anything we can do to partner with them, uh, that, that, that helps the town, uh, in, in their serving their constituency, which is also our constituency, and it, and it doesn't hurt the county, then it's a benefit to everybody in the town, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Staff, is there anything else from staff that you guys would like to add? George Leto, anything? No, Mr. Chairman, at this time, most of our questions. Commissioners, would you entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss, uh, the lease?
Call for it, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. You would have a second, second. Any further discussion, uh, discussion, Mr. Cordova?
Yes, uh, is there a way that we can read that proposal, uh, proposal to the public before you go into executive session?
I don't know if there's a written proposal or stuff.
There's not a written proposal at this time.
Not a written proposal. See, that's the way they operate. Thank you. Any further discussion? Not call for the vote.
Vice Chairman.
Uh, real quick.
Commissioner Romero?
Um, is that going to be allowed to, uh, enter into executive session with the Commission?
Uh, if, if, uh, Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, um, staff can be called into an executive session to give, um, uh, information, testimony to the Commission. They should not be there during deliberation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to call for the vote?
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenborn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yeah.
Commissioner Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Veroni?
Yes. Commissioner Romero, we will redial you from the Commission Chamber, from the executive, uh, meeting room upstairs. Give us a second.
Call for it, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second to call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenborn?
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Veroni?
Yes. A vote of Mr. Malone first?
Mr. Chairman, the, uh, county commission met in executive session, um, pursuant to subpart eight, acquisition of real property to discuss possibility of a lease proposal or a sublease proposal in connection with, um, the Kit Carson Command Center and, uh, discussed those issues. No action was taken, although it is my understanding that there may be a motion in public session.
We have a motion to accept the county attorney's report?
Call for it.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenborn?
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Veroni?
Yes. Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, Commissioner, I asked me to outline again some of the issues when discussing with, um, Mr. Leeson. I've also asked our finance director, Mr. Cordova, to come down and talk a little bit about what he's seen in research reference Otero and Ellen McGordo, who is the only PSEP that is not, um, a part of the regionalization PSEP at this point. Um, as discussed earlier, there's a 50 cent tax that is put on all Taos County residents, whether that is a cellphone line or a landline. And that money is what is used to put, um, the telephony portion of the PSEP and also to pay for the phone bills of the PSEP, um, on behalf of Taos County residents and their governing bodies. Um, that would be put in jeopardy by this, uh, PSEP if Taos County decided not to look at a consolidation in that aspect. Above that, there's also issues with the CDVG money and Cap de Lautlay money that could possibly be, uh, jeopardized further by lack of consolidation in that. And again, I'll ask Mr. Cordova, please come forward and, uh, talk a little bit about his research also.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm kind of doing the, the little research in this whole division. I, um, called an old colleague at the finance authority. We had talked about a deal that we had kind of done with Otero County Emergency Management System. They were trying to get a building in place. Because of the dissension they had with the town of Al, the city of Alengordo, Otero County, um, Secretary Clifford, the secretary of the DFA, he sits on the board for NMFA. So when that project came up for approval in front of him, he made a major point of talking about the dissension within the town. He, you know, had nothing to do with E911, but it was an emergency management. He wanted to clarify that not, not a single dollar of that money was going to go to Otero County for their E911. That's the kind of thing that worries me. So I, from that, they told me, Google, Otero County, E911. And you get all these articles and you get a lot of, um, interesting information and the background from their situation. So then I went back to DFA, talked to some colleagues there, and that's where they basically let me know that nobody will get funded. This, we take this too far, it affects all the funding that comes through E911. But then we also need to keep in mind that its DFA also sits on CDVG board. It's on the NMFA board. Pretty much any funding decision that's going to be made at the state level will involve someone from DFA. That tells me that we're getting into, you know, periphery area and it, it's hard to go and ask for Cap de Lautlay, ask for different kinds of funds from someone that thinks that we're in a dissension with our partners. And so that was something that, uh, concerned to me. Just having a little first time with, you know, serving Otero County at one time and knowing that they couldn't, they had a hard time just getting loan dollars because of it. And so just kind of thought I'd mention that and explain that DFA, that's how they will. But this whole firm of not giving any money, it's easier for them just to not give it to anybody than to make a decision.
And the 50 cent tax?
That, that funds the entire program, so it's not specific to us. Um, it funds the E911, so they have every right to withhold it. It's not like that 50 cents is earmarked for the area that it came from. It comes from all over the state, goes into this pool, and then it gets distributed as fairly as possible. They, they try to do about every five years to update. And the push all along since my time at DFA has always been to centralize all PSEPs. Kind of one per county is the ideal thing. Cap de Lautlay, the big buzzword is regionalization. That's another thing. So consolidation, regionalization, these are the buzzwords when it comes to getting funding from state dollars. So kind of maybe heading in a different direction, but you know, I feel we could take control of the regionalization and we can take control of the requests for our dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Commissioner Blankenborn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much for that, Mr. Cordova. Obviously, there's a lot of negative repercussions, not only for E911, but for future funding in all kinds of areas if we don't come to some agreement with the town of Taos. And therefore, I'm going to make a motion, uh, that we, uh, give a specific, uh, proposal to the town of the county, to the town of the county, to the town of Taos that they can vote upon, um, which does allow us sufficient flexibility and sufficient, um, say-so in the operations, uh, that, that will protect Taos County's citizens. And, and I would, uh, ask Mr. Malone to read into the record the points that we discussed during the executive session, uh, and then we can see, uh, how, how that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, should I go ahead and read it first before there's a, any further action? Please. Um, paragraph one, under a sublease proposal, location and term. If the county elects to serve as interim fiscal agent on behalf of the JPA board, then the county agrees to sublease 2,500 square feet on the ground floor of Kit Carson Command Center from the town for two years with the following conditions agreed to by the town and the county. No rent, no common space fees, and no building or property maintenance fees to, to the Taos County. These costs are the sole responsibility of the town for the first two years, exclusive of the operational costs of the PSEP or until the JPA board approves a new lease or budget to address these costs. This sublease agreement is conditioned on the other terms of this proposal relating to the JPA and PSEP. Paragraph two, governance and authority. The town of Taos, Taos County, Village of Cuesta, and Taos Ski Valley agreed to enter into a new JPA and to form a JPA Board of Directors within six months of this agreement. within six months of this agreement to permanently administer the Taos Regional E 911 Combined Dispatch P S A, called the P S A. Under the J P A, the P S A will be governed by an administrative finance board consisting of the administrator of each jurisdiction and an operational board representing the public safety programs of each entity dealing with personnel and day-to-day technical operations. Paragraph three, fiscal agency and personnel. The County Mail Act after September 15th to assume interim fiscal agency, the P S A designation, and ownership maintenance responsibility of all P S A equipment on behalf of the J P A board until the J P A agreement and the J P A board are approved under section two above for a period not to exceed six months. Fiscal agency from that date forward shall be determined by the J P A board. The fiscal agent will effectively immediately recruit, hire, supervise, and evaluate the dispatch director and staff as well as all day-to-day operations. Dispatch staff will be employees of the fiscal agent. Paragraph four, leases. The fiscal agent must then transfer the sublease with the town to the new J P A board as soon as a new J P A is adopted by all parties and the new J P A board is formed. At least six months prior to the expiration of the sublease, the J P A board in its sole discretion may either A, assume the balance of the current town, Kit Carson Electric Cooperative lease purchase agreement, B, negotiate a new lease with Kit Carson Cooperative, uh, Kit Carson Electrical Cooperative, or C, may elect such other options as may be available to the board. Five, budget. For the first two years, the county's financial contribution to the P S A shall not exceed the lesser of $371,000 or 55% of annual operating expenses after all other revenues, whichever is less. The town's financial contribution for the first two years shall be the lesser of $371,000 or 45% of all P S A annual operating costs after all other revenues, excluding any costs identified in three above. The P S A budget for the first two years shall not exceed $742,000 unless formally agreed to by the governing bodies of both the town and the county. Six, moving costs. The town agrees that it will pay all moving costs related to the relocation of the E 911 Combined Dispatch P S A to the Kit Carson Command Center. The town's share of the J P A revenues may be used for this purpose, 50% or less of the reserve balance. Seven, ownership and dissolution. The parties to the J P A agree that the P S A designation and all related equipment, leases, frequencies, licenses, and funding were acquired on behalf of all of the citizens and first responders of the region and must therefore, under the J P A, become and remain the common property of the collective members or entity created by the J P A in perpetuity. Further, that the J P A and all commonly held ownership interests established in the J P A may only be dissolved by an affirmative countywide vote of the majority of voters of all member jurisdictions or the mutual agreement of the governing bodies of all member jurisdictions. Paragraph eight, if a J P A is not agreed to as provided in two above in six months, Taos County shall have the option at any time thereafter, on 90 days' notice, to terminate the sublease in its sole discretion.
And we need, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second, discussion, Commissioner.
I just wonder, reassure our citizens or townspeople that this commission has decided also that we will move forward on our own, I mean. You know, right now, we're a place between the rock and the hard stuff. We need to take care of our citizens, but this commission has planned to move along. Deal with the man along.
Mr. Archeletta, we have a time schedule that we're still moving forward on?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, we will continue to move forward on that time schedule. This will give us an opportunity to, um, not rush that time schedule. I think that's, that's what's important, but I think Commissioner Blackenhorn is not, I'm not sure that was sent. I, I don't know if you have a question for me, Commissioner, or if there's something that you wanna clarify.
No, I, I, I agree with you, uh, Mr. Archeletta, it, it, you know, only just to say that we're putting a proposal before the Town of Taos that we're wanting them to consider. That will give us an opportunity to operate dispatch together. Because we know that if we operate dispatch separately, it's going to cost the community hundreds of thousands of dollars every single year if we operate separately. It's gonna cost us because we have to hire more people to run two than one. It's gonna cost us because we don't get the tax that our citizens are already paying. We won't get the benefit of that tax. And it will endanger all of our future grants, C D B G, et cetera, as Mr. Cordova, uh, explained to us. And so this gives us the opportunity to do this on a trial basis with sufficient county control to where we know we're not gonna get screwed. Excuse my French. And, and that's what we're doing today. You know, we're not making a firm commitment to run two separate command centers in the future. We are not doing that today. What we're doing today is we're presenting the Town of Taos with a proposal that will allow us to test out a joint operation in the Kit Carson Building and give us sufficient control to where we know we can protect our constituents in the future. I wanna make that clear because I think the Town of Taos needs to know that.
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Blackenhorn, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. Uh, I think the question that was being asked of me was, um, I don't want to fall behind on our time schedule if the Town of Taos does not agree to what's in front of this commission today and what the commission is proposing to propose to the town. And so my commitment to the commission is that we will continue moving in our time schedule until such time that that changes course. If two weeks down the line, I don't wanna just hold this project up for two weeks down the line and get further behind on the project, is basically the.
I, I understand, I understood that all along. I was, I wasn't making a place of you, I was.
Commissioner Sanchez, and then we'll get back to you, Commissioner Romero.
Also, you know, with capital outlay funding, that's really gonna impact this. You know, and Mr. Cordova, I'm glad you brought that up, you know, C D B G. You know, I'm really pushing for that, I've been pushing for that in my district for a community center. I go back home and tell them what I did, hang you, sure. But, uh, yeah, I think we're, we're gonna work together and see what we can do. Thank you.
Commissioner Romero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add in addition to the comments that Tom made, that Commissioner Blankenhorn, that, uh, the, the majority of the commission has already voted to move forward with its own, uh, 911, uh, dispatch system. And I am, uh, hoping that the Town of Taos will, uh, take up our offer today.